Portland is lowered to honor the deaths of three child victims of homicide last month, all of whom were killed on virtually the same day, April 11th, 2017. Janet Cortinas Duran, eight years old, and her older sister Jasmine, 11 years old, were shot and killed by their father the night of April 11th. Their father later killed himself amidst a confrontation with Gresham Police. Earlier that same day, a Vancouver teenager, Sean M. Scott, Jr., just 17 years old, was shot and killed in broad daylight in Holiday Park. Today, our thoughts are with the victims' families, friends, and teachers, who know better than we do the potential this young woman and these young men -- I'm sorry, these young women and young man had. To all those that work to prevent and reduce violence, especially against children, we also stand with you. This marks the 17th time we have lowered the flag since passing a resolution in 2009 to recognize and honor children who have died from abuse, neglect, or other violence. I would ask that we have a moment of silence for these three young children. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody. This is the morning meeting of the Portland City Council, Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017. Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
Here.
Salzman?
Here.
Udaley?
Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. And I do believe Commissioner Udaley is present. She'll be back momentarily. The usual pre-meeting statement: "The purpose of council meetings is to do the city's business, including hearing from the community on issues of concern. In order for us to hear from everyone and to give due consideration to matters before the council, we must all endeavor to preserve the order and decorum of these meetings." To make sure that the process is clear for everyone, I want to review some of the basic guidelines, which I hope will help everyone feel comfortable, welcome, respected, and safe at the meeting, and also to ensure that decorum is maintained. There are two opportunities for the public to participate. First, we have an opportunity for people to sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject they wish to address. These items must be scheduled in advance with the clerk's office. Second, people may sign up for public testimony on the first readings of reports, resolutions, and ordinances. If you sign up, your testimony must address the matter being considered at the time. Please state your name for the record. We don't need your address. If you're a lobbyist, please disclose that. If you're here representing an organization, please identify the organization. Individuals typically have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light is going to light up, and when your time is done, the red light will come on. Conduct that disrupts the meeting, for example shouting, or interrupting others' testimony, or interrupting during council deliberations, is not allowed. People who disrupt the meeting face ejection from the meeting. If there is a disruption, I will issue a warning that if any further disruption occurs, anyone who is disrupting the meeting will be subject to ejection for the remainder of the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave the meeting after being ejected will be subject to arrest for trespass. If folks would like to show your support for something that's being said, please just do a thumbs up or jazz hands, or whatever. If you don't like it, thumbs down is sufficient, but to keep things moving, we ask people not to vocally express themselves. Thank you, and we'll get started with council communications. Commissioner Fish?
Just to have a housekeeping matter?
Yes, sir.
So that everyone knows to run a show today, I will be asking that council item 449, which is scheduled for time certain at 2:00 PM, be referred back to my office. The lead staff person on that item is out sick, and we have rescheduled it for Thursday, May 11th, at 2:30 PM time certain. In other words, this afternoon, we'll begin at 3:00 PM with a time certain, and I'll be referring 449 back to my office.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Fish. Duly noted. Please call the first communications item.
Item 429, request of Catherine Salzman to address council regarding HB 2669 toxics reporting and community right to know. She has informed us she's not able to make it.
Next item, please.
430, request of Nate Cohen to address council regarding emergency medical services. He's had a family emergency and is not able to make it.
Thank you. Next item, please.
431, request of Catherine Smith to address council regarding city council talking to the Tigerd Police about her case.
Good morning.
Good morning. First, I want to clarify what they put about what I'm going to talk about is a little bit off.
That's fine.
It's actually that I wanted you to talk to the police chief. That's more accurate.
Okay.
It's related to that.
Yeah, it's your time. It's your time, so you can use it.
Okay, and I'm going to go over about --
You can start it over in three minutes, Carla. Thank you.
I'm going to go over about 10 or 15 seconds. I'll try to read fast, though. What do we know? Can you all hear me okay?
Yes. Carla, could you restart it at three minutes, please? Thank you.
What do we know? We know that some Tigerd cops have been shooting me and my son remotely for more than five years, every day, with mainly microwave weapons and ultrasound weapons, and even before that, but less often. We know that the Portland police officer assigned to my case refuses to investigate and prosecute those Tigerd cops because he's being blackmailed by them not to. Some Tigerd cops admitted that to me from the beginning, late 2013, that they are blackmailing him. He talks like it, and he acts like it. We know several other Portland police employees are participating in this, most ignoring my request for help, and hiding and stealing my emails and even certified letters to PC Marshman and previously to PC Larry O'Day. Wherein I asked them to assign my case to a different cop who is ethical and who will investigate and make those Tigerd cops stop shooting us. We know that you haven't talked to the police chief about this case. We know you have no legal reason for not doing so. I've asked you, and you don't answer that question, nor do your city attorneys, because they have no legal reason, nor do you for refusing to talk to the PC about these matters. We know you and the screener of your meeting requests have refused to allow me a 20-minute meeting with you to discuss this and resolve this, so I'm limited to a three-minute testimony once a month. We know you, as police commissioner, have authority to give the police chief an order, and that he must be in control of his employees, making sure they follow Oregon laws. We know the two certified letters or reports I sent you, but now there are three, were not given to you. We know I gave you, through Carla, a printout of a website from wire.com describing what a voice-to-skill weapon is that those Tigerd cops harass and manipulate me and my son with every day. We know that you already know what that weapon is and that it does exist. I know that the third certified letter I sent you, arriving April 13th, contained a report and letter addressed to Assistant Chief Larry O'Day, November 3rd, 2013, with evidence of those assaults and requesting his help, a paper of websites proving when cops acquired microwave weapons, ultrasound weapons, voice-to-skill, mind-control weapons, et cetera, in 1993, and a lethality assessment protocol form filled out proving my son and I are at high risk of being murdered by those cops. We know that murder is illegal in Oregon, so is stalking, but you don't do anything, as police commissioner, to make Portland police stop these crimes and attempted murder to us. Therefore, you are facilitating them. We know that you don't ask me any questions about these daily crimes to us, not even what is their motive. This is a tactic or strategy also used by some Portland police to discredit the target and/or to not say anything you can be held legally liable for. We know they have lots of other people in Portland they target and shoot with these weapons remotely, and we know I wrote down several of their names that are at the end of my last testimony, March 8th, and I ask you to please be sure to read them. Many are well-known crimes in Portland, including some people who died from police shootings. And lastly, we know that none of the information and evidence I've told you about these crimes is difficult to understand.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
432, request of B. Max Grad to address council regarding reducing differential exposure to police stops.
Next item, please.
Item 433, request of Jeff Cole to address council regarding public amenities for Central Eastside.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
You're already getting lots of jazz hands.
Thank you. Mayor Wheeler and commissioners, I'm here to speak -- I've given you some materials.
And I'm sure I'll restart your time. Could you state your name for the record?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No worries. I'm Jeff Cole, and I live in Sunnyside. And I'm here today to talk about the city's option to purchase 1.31 acres located approximately at southeast 14th. And Morrison, this is part of a large block. It's a very important block, and I'd like to talk about the things that make Portland special. We have things like the Rose Garden, and we have newer amenities like the Chinese Garden. These are the things that make Portland special, and I believe this super block needs attention, not just in the realm of parks, but as something that's planned outside the silos, something that's planned in a larger sense by the city. And so I'm here to say that each council member has a stake in this 1.31 acres, that we must purchase by May 29th, 2017, or we lose the chance to purchase it because of a second option that starts on June 1st. Now, I can look at each one of you and say there is something for each of you in this property. For instance, Commissioner Salzman is part of this project on the acreage that the city already owns, and building a community center is a planned subterranean parking structure. If we purchase this 1.31 acres, we can maximize the potential of this underground parking structure to service not only the community center, but Revolution Hall and other developments in the area. In the long term, this would help transportation, reduce the impact of on-street parking, and improve transportation. So we should look at this 1.31 acres as facilitating that. Mayor Wheeler, this is a perfect opportunity for the Portland Develop Commission to think outside the silos, look at this total acreage that's inside the Central Eastside urban renewal area, to create something special for the Central Eastside that's on par of Pioneer Square, that's on par with the park blocks, that's on par with the new park blocks that are in the Pearl District, and in the other areas that we develop. When we plan something like the Zidell Yards, we plan new amenities to make those areas work. We've rezoned a lot of properties in the Central Eastside from EG1 to EX and moved that zoning over to Gateway so we could accommodate more residential in this area. Thousands of units are being built. This is the primary spot to create public amenities in this spot. I've already discussed the issue with Commissioner Fritz, and we've had a lot of dialogue on this, but I think we can look at this through a lens that's larger than parks. And so I really encourage you to do this, because we only have a few days to take action, and then it's out of our hands forever. But I think we have to make sure that the parts create a greater whole, and this 1.31 acres is a critical part of this, and I would love the opportunity to discuss this with your staff and further, if you're interested.
Great. Great.
May I just make a statement for the record on this?
Please, you bet.
Thank you, Mr. Cole, and you and Mary Anschwab, who is also here, and others have been very diligent on this particular property, so I want to make sure that people at home know what we've done in terms of assessment. We did look at that property. It was, as you said, it's only 1.3 acres, and the school district's potential asking price was $10 million. So $10 million is more than we usually pay for a whole park development as well, rather than just for the site. We did look at it as to, could it be used for affordable housing? Could it be used for the navigation center? Neither Mark Jolyn or the director of the Housing Bureau was interested in that, and we just can't -- we don't have the $10 million, and the site's not included in the master plan. So the community knew when we did the master plan that the site was the site, and we simply don't have the money to be able to buy this additional property.
Can I respond? I would say, first of all, we have $60 million sitting in system development charges as we speak. Certainly, we could look at this property as something that could be bought on contract. That is a typical real estate transaction where we wouldn't have to pay the full sum. The money is going to Portland Public Schools, and they may well be back next year to ask for some help from the city, depending on how things go in Salem. I would also say that's -- so we have the southeast area, and this is right on the border of the southeast and central east side system development charges border, and the site is actually inside the border. But in southeast Portland, over $20 million in system development fees have been collected, and less than $2 million has been spent in southeast in parks. I really think we have to look at this. I'll throw out one more idea. It turns out that James Beard graduated from Washington High School, and I think this would be the ideal site for a James Beard public market. Using part of that acreage, they need about 50,000 square feet on the main level, but they could put cold storage in the subterranean area.
Mr. Cole, I have to interrupt you, because I forgot to say something, and that is that, as you know, the option says that we can buy it if we're going to immediately proceed to building the community center, and probably $60 million is -- we could -- much of that system development charge money has already been allocated, and we do not have the capacity to build and operate a new community center at this time, although we will hopefully be going out for a capital bond within the not-too-distant future.
That said, and I'm sure Commissioner Fritz does know the details, could you email that to me? I'd actually like to read that this afternoon.
Okay. Great. I will.
Thank you for speaking.
Nope, I'm not making any promises or representations, but it's interesting, and I want to take a look at it.
I would like the opportunity to share with all of you.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I really appreciate it. Thanks, Jeff. Let's move to the consent agenda. I believe a couple of items have been pulled. Carla, I show 436 and 438. Are there others?
That's the only two I have, correct.
All right. Why don't we call the roll, please, on those that remain in the agenda?
Okay. Fish?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
This is a -- the only item under the consent now is for increasing the value of our contract to something that we've already approved before. Aye.
Wheeler?
All right. The consent agenda is adopted. Do we have staff here for the explanation of either 436 or 438? If not, we'll --
Somebody's up.
Yeah, which one, sir? Why don't you come on up, and let's take care of that? So we're skipping 436. If you could read 438, please.
438, authorize a competitive solicitation for security services for the Smart Park garages and the Portland Streetcar Facility at an estimated amount of $4 million for five years.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, mayor and commissioners. My name is Michael Jacobs. I'm the Smart Park manager for the Bureau of Transportation. The ordinance before you this morning is to authorize a competitive solicitation for the purchase of security services for Smart Park garages and Portland Streetcar Facility at an estimated amount of about $4 million for over five years. The selected contractor will provide security services for all six Smart Park garages to help maintain safety in the system. The contractor will also provide security services for P-Bot's streetcar facility on Northrop and surrounding blocks in support of safe public transit service. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. If you could step aside, we'll hear from whoever pulled it, and they may have a question or two. Public testimony?
I believe Mimi Germain and Star Stoffer both wanted to speak to this.
Very good. Good morning.
Good morning. Before I start about this, I have a poem that I'd like to share with you today that has relevance. It's called "A Free Pass." There are holes in the worn shoes of this story and dried, bloodied mud on the soul of the memories, but along each ragged edge, inside the fold of each pedal told, is my family emigrating the pogroms, the shdetel, rogacha of Ukraine, 1912 to 1918. You know, you can't take the Jew, the Yiddish kite, the Jude, the Kristallnacht, the kike, the trains, the ovens, the dogs, the bullets, the fear, the bloodlines out of the Jew. But you do know how to terrify us again, growing fascist roots in the USA while giving free passes to Nazis for bus rides at free speech rallies while saluting Hitler in 2017. I carry the Tay-Sachs gene. I carry my family in my DNA. I am a Jew. I will always be a Jew. You refused me a ride on the bus when you gave Nazis a free pass because I cannot ride a bus filled with Nazis on a free ride.
Oh, Mrs. Germain, I'm going to have to ask you to make your testimony germane to item 438.
It is germane to giving money to a group of people who don't need the money when other people in the city need that money for funerals for the current genocide that's going on between our cops and the black communities. So I'd like to finish this, because it is germane, and I can talk more about that with my three minutes. You refused me a ride on the bus when you gave Nazis a free pass because I cannot ride a bus filled with Nazis on a free -- ride a bus filled with Nazis on a free ride, Nazis who want to kill me in Portland and anywhere else. Mayor, what were you thinking? What is sanctuary, really? I will go now back deep into the roots of my family while you decide if you will fire the Nazi cops on our police force, or continue to hand out the free pass of oppression and terror over us, the Jews, the blacks, the houseless, the poor, the oppressed, under your current rule. So $4 million to parking lots, to security for parking lots, a private parking lot firm as far as I know. I could be wrong on that, but still, $4 million. My suggestion, instead of using $4 million for that, is to, let's all come together, open our hearts, and take that money, and supply the families who can't afford funerals for their kids who have, or daughters, like Karen, who died in a parking lot. Provide a funeral space for them at our beautiful cemetery that we have in, I'm not sure where that was, in southeast, where Quanis Hayes was buried. And provide money for the families who can't support funerals for their kids who do get killed by our police, instead of giving private parking lot companies extraneous $4 million for things that I'm sure they don't need $4 million for.
Thank you. Good morning.
All right. My name is Karen Stark, and I'm a taxpayer of Portland, Oregon. I believe that $4 million sounds a bit excessive. In the past, like Mimi said, Karen Lee Batts died in a parking garage in downtown Portland. And I would hope that, if you're trying to spend more on security, that you would be able to use that security to make sure that some of our houseless members who are seeking refuge or warm places in these parking garages aren't used to brutalize them and to exclude them from these public spaces, because I don't find it acceptable that people are dying on our streets, and you're wanting to spend $4 million more dollars over the course of five years on added security. It just doesn't sound plausible, or humane is actually the better word for it, it doesn't sound humane, to increase security when people are continuously dying. I think maybe even, if you cut it in half to $2 million, it would maybe be more reasonable, and you would have more money to set aside for other services that would prevent the problems that are happening in our parking garages that you apparently need security for. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Could I just clarify something?
Commissioner, you bet.
Smart Park buildings are city-owned, public facilities. We're not giving $4 million to a private company. I just wanted to.
Okay, cool. All the more reason.
Good morning.
Star Stoffer, good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Udaley, because that was actually one of my clarifying questions. I appreciate that. This is appalling. When I park in the Smart Park garage for four hours, I pay $13. Now, I can imagine that hundreds and hundreds of cars are parking in those garages every day. There's no overhead. There's like four employees in this garage. What the hell do they need $4 million for? Use the money that you're charging people to park there. This isn't rocket science. I'd like to see, since it's city-owned, and since we're talking about the allocation of city funds, I want to see a full budget justification for this request. I want to know why $4 million is the number. And not only that, exactly where would you like houseless people to go? You want to build stuff everywhere? You're sweeping them out everywhere? They can't go in the parking garage, because you want to increase security, which we all know means more Portland cops in parking garages. If we're going to start using them that way, we might want to reduce their pay to what people at, say, Sears get for working loss prevention. We have enough cops and door rattlers in this city. What we don't have are enough humanitarians and politicians thinking outside of making more money and doing more for marginalized communities and vulnerable community members. And every freaking week that I come here, I hear millions for this, and millions for that, and this and that. And I don't hear anybody talking about allocating funds to uplift black communities, or allocating funds to take care of people that are houseless. The hell is wrong with you people? $4 million for a security in a parking garage? For what? People have car insurance. Those garages have insurance. The hell do you need $4 million for? If we're just going to flush money, you mind paying off some of my bills? Shame on you guys. This is ridiculous. I want to see a full budget justification. Or I say you're misusing public funds. Since I'm a taxpayer, I have that right. Since I park in those garages, I have that right. And since Portland Police feel that they can exclude people from the parking garage, I damn well know that they're the security you're talking about. And I believe we just approved $10 million for the Portland Police, and thousands more for them to have leases on properties they don't need to spy on people they have no business spying on. Holy crap. So $4 million for more security, AKA more money for the freaking cops. Who do you think you're kidding? So you can target houseless people and people of color? Just more white supremacist circle jerking.
Thank you for your testimony. Next item, please. Or is there, we have one more? Very good. Two more. Everybody wants to talk about this contract. Come on up.
Millions and millions.
We have to have the five middle-aged white guys.
Gentlemen, proceed to me.
Who wants to start? Mr. Walsh.
Good morning. My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. And I got to tell you guys, this is the funniest thing I've ever seen. Except it's $4 million involved. And again, you tried to slide it underneath the table on the consent agenda, and for your views, consent agenda means no discussion unless somebody comes along and pulls it, which we did. And we, sitting, just having coffee this morning, five of us, said, you know, we could do the security for $2 million. So we're offering you $2 million savings. What do you think, guys?
Submit an RFP. I'm interested. Let's see.
All right. Why don't you postpone this, and we will get you a proposal in writing? Because I was not aware that people were so enthused about doing security. So we're going to save you $2 million. Put it over to next week, and I'll guarantee you something in writing. Mimi and I will work on it, and we'll give you something in writing.
Commissioner Fritz.
You own the building, as Udaley, the Commissioner, the new Commissioner, said. I take her at a word you do own the building. So what you got to do is hire us. And if you hire us, we might not book you so much on Wednesday morning, because we'll be tired. So this is really kind of comical. And we could save you some money, Mr. Saltzman. What do you think? $2 million here, $2 million there. Pretty soon, we're going to be talking about major money. And maybe we could get the people off the streets, like everybody's crying for you to do. So Mayor, why don't you put it over for one week, and call my bluff, and say, Mr. Walsh, get your proposal in here by next week, and we'll look at it. And if it's reasonable, and it makes sense, and it's in English, and it's not about the five white guys, we'll take it up. What do you think, Mayor?
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Next, Commissioner Fritz.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
This is to authorize solicitation, so this is asking everybody, including you, to please send in your bid.
So we're looking forward to seeing it.
So that also, since it also has solicitation.
So we got 30 days.
You've got plenty of time.
And I'm getting older, so I write slower. 30 days is good.
We look forward to it.
Go to procurement services, and you'll see the RFP.
Good morning.
Hello. I know this mic is going to go live. Are you getting this right? So I'm Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, and I do think that there's, you know, sometimes the, yeah. A little bit? Thanks very much. So sometimes it is confusion that this is not an ordinance yet authorizing us to spend maybe up to a cap of $4 million. But I do think that we should look at best practices, and when we deal with the most serious things, the Supreme Court and Oregon statutes tell us that certain types of legislations have to be very specific and limited in topic. And although this is all security, I'm not sure it's actually a good idea for the Bureau of Transportation to lump together parking lot safety with whatever the vast and complex security needs are for our tiny little streetcar parking garage over there under 405. So I really encourage you to listen to Mr. Walsh's suggestion that you pull back. I don't know how much you've been able to discuss this. Those people paying too much attention to what you all do will realize that actually two or three times this year, just the parking garage part of this made it on the agenda for around $800,000, I think. And now, so if that was the case, it was $800,000. I don't remember. Maybe it was, but I think that it's very hard for us to, it's easy for us to be critical about the big $4 million price tag. It's very hard for people to be comprehensive until we see, the document doesn't show us the details of the RFP about how many hours, how many people, getting, you know, the fact that there's not a smart park, I don't think there are any smart parks in the Pearl or located near the P-Bot. So we have this problem of conflating things that aren't really that similar, security for the parking lot garages and for the streetcar garage. One thing that's very germane to what Mr. Walsh brought up is, when you package this as a large $4 million multi-site deal, I think we create barriers for the smallest businesses, minority business, women-led business, that might not be positioned to serve five sites. It's just channeling money back to the same old players. Probably the three people that will submit for this are G4S, Portland Patrol, and Pacific Patrol. So can they, do we have leverage to encourage them to perhaps do some subcontracting? Can we get DePaul, which is a much better security company? So there's a lot here. I urge you to maybe not even vote, to think about whether this can be broken up, and to try and understand how, being an agenda item, that was only parking garages for a while, even though it's all under P-Bot, how did the streetcar garage come into it, and what is the per-site cost? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Super Watch Dog X. One of the problems I have with the city of Portland is thinking there in the real estate business, you shouldn't own these parking structures. You should sell all these parking structures off, take the money back, as some people said, put it into the building more housing for the homeless, and/or you must reserve the right to redevelop these pieces of well-located properties, and also build apartments up above. Basically, what you're doing is you're a real estate holding company addicted to fossil fuels. You have 3,800 parking spaces, bringing them all downtown, and forcing us to breathe that polluted air. Again, I disagree with you doing that. I would rather have all electric vehicles. Again, you are profit-driven. This is nothing but profit for the city. And so I'm absolutely against you being a real estate holding company, creating profit, bringing fossil fuel vehicles down into this location, polluting the air, and not looking at future housing by redeveloping these sites, which are prime locations. We can put the parking down underneath, and also have housing units up above. And we need to look at this, because to me, the city of Portland is just holding this profit-driven. And the $4 million at $800,000 per year, you know, I mean, that's a big number. Again, you're going to be producing that off the receipts produced off these parking spaces. So yeah, I guess I shouldn't be too concerned, because that money, will it end up in the general fund again or not? Probably not. But the reality is, I think these spots, these locations are underutilized, they're not the highest and best use. We could put housing there, we could still have the parking, and you could put limitations on anybody with a fossil fuel vehicle. You don't get to park in these structures. Keep them out of the central city. We want clean air in the central city. Buy electric. Quit using your fossil fuel vehicles and polluting our air downtown. I'm sick and tired of breathing the polluted air downtown, which these city officials think I have to be forced to do when I walk along the public sidewalks. Again, I hold you responsible for anything to do with my health pertaining to the polluted air, which I don't think I have to breathe, because you want to profit off of these parking structures. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to briefly just add, Commissioner Fritz, I just noticed that on the last lines of the last page, this is really the only opportunity for the public to engage. If you approve this, it goes through normal procurement channels, so it'll be kind of dark for us. We won't know. The procurement office will just give the best bidder the money, and on it will go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there any other public testimony on this item?
No.
No. Could we have staff come back up, please? I don't know if public testimony inspired you to add any further information. I think we have a couple of questions. There was a question raised about minority contractors, and how that would fit in potentially to this RFP. Could you describe some of the scenarios around that?
When the public is notified, when the solicitation actually goes out onto the street, all contractors will get notified, whether they're minority contractors, certified contractors of any kind, will receive the notification, just as they did last time. And there is a section in the solicitation piece talking about minority subcontracting, what can be done. It's part of the proposals, and it's a scored part of the proposals. So value is placed on that. We don't have the solicitation done yet. We can't legally do that.
Okay.
So by the time this ordinance is passed, and then we have the wait period for that, then we will develop the RFP. There will be plenty of time for input from council and/or other entities into that document. The union put some significant, displayed significant interest last time, and we incorporated virtually everything that they talked about. So there is plenty of open time for input relative to the document itself as it comes up.
And are all contractors held to the same standard during the application process?
Yes, sir.
And there was some testimony that people were suggesting these funds go to the Portland Police Bureau or to police officers. What percentage of this $4 million goes to the Portland Police Bureau or police officers?
These funds go to the contractor.
So is that 0%?
Yes, that is 0%.
Any further questions?
I seem to remember in a previous solicitation that there has been a coalition of smaller contractors who put together a proposal. Am I remembering that correctly, maybe eight years ago or so?
Just, actually, that was a year before I got here, but yes, ma'am, there was a group put together. It was not a successful proposal, but, and certainly, nothing would restrict a new group of that caliber from putting together a proposal and coming to us with something relative to how it would work. If it's, you know, meets the highest score kind of thing, absolutely. You know, I think that'd be great.
Great.
And then, once you decided who to select, does that come back to council for confirmation?
I'm sorry, can you?
When you've selected the winner of the proposals, does that come back to council for confirmation as to the amount and the company?
Yes, ma'am. Once the proposal is selected, the contract itself comes back before this group for approval. Yes.
And just one last question. It says in the ordinance that the previous solicitation was withdrawn, and is now put back together again. Could you tell us why that was, what happened then?
The previous solicitation was put out. We got significant input from the union and from other groups. The opening of it was delayed several times to accommodate adding information to it. It went through an evaluation process, and there was a firm selected. And when the contract came here, there was some further discussion, which occurred in chambers, as I understand it, and that was just pulled back and not acted upon. We then canceled that solicitation, and that's the basis for this being back here with another ordinance to redo the solicitation. In the meantime, we had to extend the existing contract for a year so that we could get all of this stuff done and back.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Udaley?
I'd just like to clarify a couple issues that came up in public testimony. As I mentioned, Smart Parks are city-owned, where this contract is for six parking garages in the streetcar facility. Five of those six garages are open 24 hours a day. The breakdown is less than $1,600 a day. So I realize $4 million does sound like an extraordinary amount of money, but you have to actually look at what it's paying for to understand. And the fact is, we're not giving Smart Park $4 million. That's coming out of garage receipts and streetcar receipts, so.
Yeah, that's an important point.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further comments or questions? This is a non-emergency first reading. It moves to second reading. Thank you. Before we go back to, thank you, gentlemen. Before we go back to 436. Before we go back to 436, we have a time certain, item 434. Out of respect to the people who've shown up for the time certain, why don't we move to that next, and we'll move back to 436 after the time certain.
434. Declare intent to initiate local improvement district formation proceedings to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements in the North Burlington Avenue and Edison Street Local Improvement District.
Commissioner Salzman?
Thank you, Mayor. Before us is the Resolution to Create the Local Improvement District Proposal that is a common sense approach to achieving economies of scale by leveraging developer dollars to also build much-needed adjacent infrastructure improvements to benefit the Cathedral Park neighborhood. Andrew Abbey, our LID administrator, will explain all the details shortly. But I just wanted to thank many of the people up front that made this proposal possible, starting with the Cathedral Park Neighborhood Association. They've been a great advocate for this project. So, thank you Chair Jennifer Vitello for that. Also, a big thank you to some of the individuals we'll hear from this morning. Property owner Leslie Smith, who's been a steadfast supporter of this local improvement district. Developer Ben Wood, whose project is bringing housing into the neighborhood and will receive some stormwater benefits from this LID. Helen Oost, our community garden supporter, who has kept that important asset front and center throughout the development of this LID. Alicia Delashmut of Inclusive Community Collaborative LLC, and Joe Wykowski of Portland Community Asset Builders LLC for their commitments to the project. And we'll hear all from them shortly. Thank you. So, now I'll turn it over to Andrew Abbey.
Thank you, Commissioner Salzman. Andrew Abbey, Local Improvement District Administrator. So, I went out to Cathedral Park last Friday to take some pictures. This is my favorite picture in the slide. I think it really reflects the ethos of the neighborhood, that they really do want better pedestrian connections in this neighborhood. This is a sign at Burlington and Willamette. This is a map of the local improvement district. So, the two properties that are developing are on the south side of Edison Street, closest to Burlington Avenue. And we did some outreach with existing residents, and it seemed like that there was a very strong business case to be made while we're out there. Due to the large fixed cost of doing a project, however small, we thought that there was a good case to be made to expand the project and have a more comprehensive stormwater solution. So, the city of Portland rates all of its streets on a periodic cycle. These two segments of North Edison Street on a 0 to 100 scale have a rating between 16 and 18. So, it's not much better than an unpaved road. You can see kind of the grim condition of the pavement. You also see that there's no curb on the south side of the street, which presents stormwater drainage problem for downhill properties. And what we particularly didn't want to have happen was have new development come in and then have them receive stormwater runoff from the public right-of-way. So, this is a picture that I took in front of the John's Community Garden. You can see that it's a rather haphazard parking situation there, and we'll put a curb in and deal with that stormwater. This is the North John Avenue right-of-way, south of North Edison Street. So, what happens right now is the stormwater comes down Edison Street, and it makes the turn, goes around this corner, and it causes these erosion problems and works its way downhill towards Mr. Wood's properties. And he couldn't be here today, but he was very supportive of this project, addressing the stormwater issue so that he wouldn't be receiving the downhill runoff from the public right-of-way. And then, just finally, to wrap up, this is an existing sidewalk on North Burlington Avenue that we will be reconstructing as part of this project. And overall, we have over 90% support for this LID, and I would encourage the council to approve this resolution today. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have before we move on to public testimony. Thank you.
Looks like we're ready for public testimony. Thank you. Carla will be back, I assume, in a moment.
She probably went to get the list of testimony.
She probably did. We'll wait just one moment. Carla will be back. Hello.
We're lost without you.
We have eight people.
Very good.
First three are Leslie Smith, Helen Oost, and Cameron Stark.
Very good. Three minutes. Name for the record, please.
Hi. I'm Leslie Smith. I live in the St. John's Bridge condominium on Edison Street, and we voted in favor of the lid. And we're just asking you to approve it. Pretty much the same thing that Andrew said. The asphalt on the Edison Street is falling apart. It's eroded to pretty much gravel on much of the street. And when it rains, the stormwater flows in the street and the sidewalk, not into the storm drains. I can attest to that. Edison is used by a lot of pedestrians, but since the sidewalks are in such poor shape, most people walk in the street instead of the sidewalks. And there's going to be over 20 new housing units just in this lid area, plus a potential of, you know, over 400 new units just between North Burlington and North Richmond Avenue, between Edison going down to the river. And Edison is one of two streets that connect between these two, so we can expect to see a lot more car and pedestrian traffic on the street. And this is a designated pedestrian area, but it has pretty limited pedestrian access now, and it's only going to get worse without new sidewalks. So, really encourage you to do this, and people seem to be really supportive of it. So.
Thank you. Good morning.
My name is Helen Oost, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Although I don't actually live in this area, I'm there a lot because I'm the co-manager of the John's Community Garden, which is right there on Edison. The garden is composed of two parts. The North Community Garden is located on the south side of Edison. And we have 97 people that I actually email that have plots, families that have plots there. And you won't see more than one or two at a time unless we have a work party, and then we only get about a dozen people. But you think about the fact that we have 97 that I send emails to, plus we have six Hmong families also. As you can imagine, the people, a lot of them walk, but many of them do drive their cars, and it's definitely an issue to cross the street there. In addition, we have the South Garden, which is down North Avenue, a gravel road, and it actually faces the gravel road, not Edison. And the two gardens are connected by a pathway that goes between the two gardens because the shed is in the North Garden, and the South Garden use that. So, you have North Avenue coming down the hill, and then the pedestrians, the gardeners passing between these. So, in addition to the improvements on Edison, I'd like to also suggest that you vacate the road, the North John's Avenue, from Edison down to North Decatur... Is that how you pronounce it? ...Street for the safety of pedestrians. Because of the steepness of the road, if that road, if North John's Avenue was improved, it would be coming down, and the pedestrian crossing would be right at the base of the hill, which would be a problem for pedestrians. So, as a summary, as a volunteer of the Parks and Recreation John's Community Garden, I look forward to the improvements because of the improved parking and the safety both on Edison and on North John's Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
My name's Cameron Stark, and I actually live in the downtown St. John's Business District. I would like to know where they found the 90% approval rating for this because I don't believe I was ever questioned in this. I ride my skateboard down Edison. I walk all along these streets, and I don't say that I see a problem with how they are at the moment. My main concern, though, with the flooding is that in the fall, when the leaves fall from the trees, many times, the county or the city, I'm not sure who it is, the cleanup crew, but they don't come out there and they clean the leaves up off the streets and out of the strain dorms, and then that's where the flooding comes from. And it has caused a lot of problems. And then, when you look at the dynamics of these streets, Burlington, Richmond, and Baltimore are massive hills. I mean, these are pretty steep hills that are even tough to walk up. So, the flooding down there at the bottoms of those streets is very apparent. I also wonder why this has never come up before until these new housing developments have come up into this part of the neighborhood, into the Cathedral Park area. It should have come up a long time ago when lower-income families were living there and facing these problems. So, I do find that concerning. It seems to be favoring the new residents that are moving in there from out of town. Parking is an issue in St. John's, too, but there's not a whole lot you can do about that unless you want to build a massive parking garage, which we already have one monstrosity coming up at Lombard and Charleston. I just can't say that I really trust this LID or proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three are Mimi Germin, Star Stoffer, and Jennifer Vitello.
Good morning.
My name's Mimi Germin, and I know those streets, and those streets are really difficult to walk down, for sure. We saw this coming. I live in St. John's, and we saw structural problems coming when nobody cared about gentrifying St. John's. And we're in like full gentrification mode now. I've been in St. John's since 2001, and Kenton before that. And there's so many apartment buildings now and townhouses that have been put in, causing so much more traffic on our roads in St. John's and the bridge in St. John's. And what isn't being addressed is our houseless community in St. John's. I mean, I know people get tired of me coming here and talking about the houseless community, but they're everywhere, and we have to care about it, not sweep them up, not put paving pothole roads in front of living people and their animals in our houseless communities in our park, in Cathedral Park. There's people who live in Cathedral Park and should have homes. And instead of having homes, we've created one, two, I don't know, five, seven, maybe 10 different new apartment structures for people who have money, who have never lived in North Portland, who are now all in North Portland, in St. John's, really not being a part of our community at all, wishing that people in the houseless community would just go away when we tried to bring in housing for them. I mean, this thing, it comes back to gentrification. And I get that those roads are terrible, and for anybody who is even, who has difficulty walking, you know, if they're in a wheelchair, if they have a cane, if there's anything that goes on, if they're blind, they're treacherous, granted, and something should be done about those. But I do think that our attention needs to come back, continue to revert back to what is a community? What is St. John's? What is anywhere? You pick it, where you live, you know? We have to take care of the houseless. And I would like to see attention from my community in St. John's, instead of just my, 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 my for, you know, our poor street, which we can't walk down. What about coming here and talking about our houseless community and dealing with homes there? I just wanted, again, to bring attention to the fact that gentrification kills, and it's removed our black community, at least in some percentage. The rent hikes are so high just across Lombard, you know, on Pheasant Inn and on down. It's affecting the Hispanic, the Latino community greatly. And here we are, talking about paving roads for, you know, a gentrifying community. And it's difficult to deal with.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning, Star Stoffer. I share a lot of the same concerns that Mimi has and that Cameron have as well. Quite frankly, my overarching concern is the city's ability to do anything with our transportation. I mean, I haven't forgotten the snowstorm and the absolute ultimate failure of P-Bot and ODOT, and their inability to preemptive strike or even follow through with anything comprehensive that will lead to the city being able to function on a healthier level. But this sounds more to me like a bunch of white people in St. John's are upset that houseless people and people of color and other vulnerable community members are there. And this is a really convenient way to sweep them out, which is what always happens whenever we have to fix a pothole. I mean, I know that you don't have a whole lot of experience fixing potholes. I mean, you did fix the one for a photo op, but some of our anarchists in this city fixed potholes, people that you conveniently leave out of these conversations, even though they do a lot more community work than you do. This is just to sweep out houseless people because a bunch of white people don't like how their sidewalk looks. Well, boo hoo. The entire city is filled with potholes. That's why you're pothole Ted. Funds need to be allocated for people who are vulnerable, not fixing cracks in sidewalks. There's a crack in our society. I don't give a damn about their sidewalk. Step over the crack. Your mom's back doesn't actually get broken, people. That's a myth. This makes me sick that we're talking about allocating more money and more time and more energy to further gentrify an entire neighborhood. I grew up in St. John's. I went to sit in George and Roosevelt. And now, and when I grew up there, it was mostly minority community, and now it's just white, white, white. And I can't even afford to live in the neighborhood I grew up in. People in this city need to grow up, and you guys need to get your priorities straight.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Vitello. I'm the Chair of the Cathedral Park Neighborhood Association. I'm here today to testify in favor of Agenda Item 434, the creation of a local improvement district located at the intersection of North Edison and North Burlington Ave. Thank you to Commissioner Salzman for introducing this item. Currently, the Cathedral Park neighborhood suffers from a lack of investment from the city. As a neighborhood, approximately 9.4% of our streets are unpaved as compared to a 2.8% citywide average. Many more of our streets have no sidewalks, lighting, signage, or improved crosswalks. Despite the fact that the proposed lid is located within a designated pedestrian district, North Edison is largely unimproved. You guys saw the pictures that Andrew had. The location of the proposed lid is particularly challenging. The site is located on a 12% grade slope down the hill toward the Willamette River. This means there's a 24-foot drop between Edison Street and the next street down, Decatur Street. As such, this lid is greatly needed from a stormwater management perspective. When Portland's copious rain begins to fall, the stormwater flows unabated from North Edison and washes out North John Ave, a completely undeveloped road, making the entrance to the Community Garden on John Street impassable. This lid is an $819,000 project. The city's allocation of this cost is only about $310,000. The remainder of the cost will be paid by adjacent property owners. It is important to note that not only are the homeowners on North Edison personally investing in these street improvements out of their own pockets, but one such property owner who you'll hear from today is a low-income housing development for disabled individuals. In light of the burden these property owners have agreed to shoulder, it is our hope that the city bureaus owning property adjacent to this proposed lid will also recognize the need for these street and stormwater improvements and agree to contribute their share to this effort. It is the Cathedral Park neighborhood's hope that the creation of this lid will be the first of many safety, transportation, and watershed improvements in the neighborhood. The residents of the Cathedral Park neighborhood are putting some skin in the game, and we hope the city will do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on the Neighborhood Association Board and for taking the time to come today.
Thank you.
Your mic's not on.
The mayor and I have convened a group of community stakeholders around Superfund and some early action. There's a number, there's a lot of people in your neighborhood who'd like to see some early action at the foot of Cathedral Park in what is sort of like now an area that would increase access, obviously, to the river. And are you directly engaged in that process, or do you have a representative from the Neighborhood Association?
We don't, no.
So, if you could shoot me an email, or I'll shoot you an email, I want to make sure that you're at the table.
Okay, thank you very much.
As we make some decisions about potentially early action.
Okay.
And thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Is there further public testimony on this item?
We have two more.
Very good.
Alicia Delashmut and Joe Wykowski.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi there.
Hello.
Thank you for hearing me this morning. I'm Alicia De La Schmutt. I'm the founding neighbor of the Inclusive Community Collaborative, and we are going to be building homes for folks on the Edison site, and we're, because of the zoning requirements, we need to do street improvements. And I think it's a wonderful idea that it not only improves the street in front of our project, but increases the access to the neighborhood, to the community garden, allows our small project to extend into the neighborhood. And I really appreciate the neighborhood approval of this and backing on this. We're all in this together. The Inclusive Community Collaborative is reaching out to our vulnerable populations and making sure that we intentionally include folks that are below median income, experience disability, and want to age in a home of their choice. So this isn't just a middle-class project. It is reaching out to our vulnerable populations and building community, not only within that community, but our greater community as well. So I appreciate the opportunity for being able to expand that into the greater neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Joe Wykowski. I'm the Executive Director of Community Vision Incorporated. PCAB, as you see it, LLC, is the developer of the property along Edison. And we're a nonprofit organization that assists people with disabilities in many ways all over the Portland area. We secured this land quite a while ago because we knew it was one of the last chances to have a piece of land that would provide some affordable homeownership for individuals and families with disabilities and other community members. We're very interested in bringing people together from all walks of life and community, and we've worked really closely with the Cathedral Park Neighborhood Association in planning and the city and are in favor of this LID. As you know, we will still pay for our more-than-fair share of developing the street, and the only way to make it accessible and safe for everyone is to have the LID and do the entire development and LID on the street along with the project. Again, as Alicia mentioned, this is a project that invites all people to live together in community, and it's an opportunity to stabilize the community and assist community members with homeownership when we're losing a lot of opportunities for homeownership around Portland. So that's why we got involved, and we've had many years of successful homeownership and community projects in the Portland area, and we're very excited to see this project go forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I would like to just express my support and enthusiasm for this project. It's a really exciting project, inclusive, accessible housing, mixed-income homeownership opportunities. And just mention that I hear from constituents across the city who have been pushed out of the central city into some of our less-developed areas who have, particularly with mobility challenges, and sometimes they're practically housebound if they don't have their own vehicle due to either damaged or non-existent sidewalks, unsafe crosswalks, et cetera. So I actually have a question for Andrew, if...
I have one. Could I just want to say, amplify something Commissioner Udaley mentioned. When I was the Parks Commissioner, we did a master plan with the community to imagine what, what an updated Cathedral Park would look like. That's in the queue, and, and, you know, there's lots of these plans, and Commissioner Fritz, I think appropriately, is making big investments in East Portland, where there's been his, where there are no parks, before we do the sort of updating of existing parks. But since you are putting housing in this location for people that, like Commissioner Udaley's son, that have mobility issues, I want to make sure that we take that off the shelf and look to see, are there any accessibility improvements that we can do once this development's put into place so that people can actually access the park? So thank you, Brian.
Let's bring up, you, I'll take your seat, bring Andrew Abbey for further questions.
Commissioner Udaley, did you have a question?
Hello, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Bear with me, because I'm, you know, LIDs are kind of a new thing for me. I'm just learning, and I think the public would like to learn as well. I see some numbers in here as far as the money coming from private property owners and from us, and there's approximately 9% gap. Where does the rest of that money come from?
The Bureau of Transportation is funding the overhead costs on their LID, so the balance of the project that is funding that isn't picked up by the property owners is being paid for by the Bureau of Transportation.
I think Commissioner Udaley was wondering about those who are not supporting it. They still have to pay, right? Even if they...
Oh, yes. So all the benefiting properties are charged for the LID, whether or not they petitioned in favor. But we were very pleased that we got drawn petition support. And some of those condo owners, by the way, are out of state, and I think they're, some of them are renting out their condos, so I wouldn't necessarily take that as indicative of non-support, so.
So when you, I think it was you that said 90%, support.
Yeah.
You mean affected property owners on that area?
Yes.
And so are those the only people that are notified of this?
Well, we always notify all the properties, the owners of properties proposed for inclusion in the LID. And then we also notify the Neighborhood Association, the Neighborhood Coalition. I was very pleased to have engagement with Cathedral Park. I've never actually done an LID west of Interstate Avenue, so there's a huge swath of North Portland with infrastructure deficiencies. I've never had the opportunity to do anything for them, so. And one other thing I just wanted to mention, you know, several years ago, there was a lot of money spent on redeveloping Hillsdale Terrace in southwest Portland. That was, that was a housing project that had Southwest California Street uphill from it, dumped water over many decades into that housing complex. There was mold, there was livability issues. So as a result, that development had to be torn down and rebuilt at great expense. What we're trying to do here is to be smart and build the street stormwater infrastructure so when those housing units go in, we don't have a stormwater problem, a mold problem, all the things that, for example, we had with Hillsdale Terrace in southwest Portland.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So Andrew, I guess, so I think you talked about the 90%, that's the people who are surrounded by the improvements that vote. There was a suggestion by Ms. Oss about including North John's Avenue in the LID. Do you want to talk to that?
Yes, Commissioner. So we looked at North John Avenue. I think it would be a big mistake to try to improve that in the future. It's extremely steep with a 12% grade. If we did ADA-compliant sidewalks, it would basically wipe out the John Community Garden. What I thought I might do with the council's blessing is when I bring back an LID formation ordinance, direct PBOT to pursue a street vacation for North John Avenue and then extend the curb, which right now would end at John Avenue. If we know that we're going to vacate the street, we could put a curb across there and offer some additional stormwater benefit at not very much cost. So if that meets with the pleasure of the council, I'd be happy to incorporate that into the formation ordinance that would come back this summer.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fish?
Thanks to everybody for taking time today to come out and testify. Thank you, Commissioner Saltzman, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Andrew, for doing the superb job you always do. Andrew is one of, in my opinions, the finest public servants at the city. And almost invariably, there is virtually unanimous support for the LIDs he brings forward because he makes the extra effort to get community support, and he's trusted, and he's certainly trusted by this council. So thank you, Andrew. And finally, this is, as Dan said, an innovative way to leverage private resources to enhance infrastructure and in doing so, benefit everybody in the community. And today, I'm proud to vote aye.
Saltzman?
Thanks, Andrew, for bringing this forward. Thank you to the Neighborhood Association, to all the others who testified today. Very happy to hear about the inclusive housing that's going in. And that's, that sounds great, so more power to you. And this is a great project. Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, everything that Commissioner Fish and Commissioner Saltzman said, I do also want to thank Commissioner Fish for pledging the Water Bureau and Bureau of Environmental Services to pay their fair share, as very appropriately so. And I will ask, once I get, if I get parks back, I will ask for them to look at Cathedral Park's accessibility options and see if there might be some bond money left over or what else we could do about that. So thank you for that suggestion. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The resolution's adopted. Thank you all for your hard work. The, we're going to move, Director Kenwood was here for 436, but out of respect to the large number of people that are here for 435, I'm going to hold off on that closer to 445, and we'll do 435 next, which is a time certain.
435. Establish an open data policy and create an open data program for the city of Portland.
Good morning. This Open Data Source Ordinance expands upon the work that's already been completed as part of the 2009 Open Data Resolution. It establishes mechanisms for engaging all city bureaus in the proactive collection and distribution of city data. Portland was the very first jurisdiction to pass a resolution to state its commitment to open data. And Portland continues to be on the cutting edge, now taking this important next step to set up policies to implement open data. This ordinance is a result of a partnership between the city of Portland and Bloomberg Philanthropies What Works Cities. Leadership and staff from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and the City Budget Office are here to present the details of that partnership and that ordinance before you today. I'll now turn it over to Commissioner Saltzman, who is also introducing this important ordinance. Commissioner Saltzman?
Thank you, Mayor. This partnership will bring a powerful tool to our residents, local business, and mission-driven organizations. As we'll learn more about today, open data at its core is about fostering transparency and efficiency in government. I am particularly enthusiastic on the potential open data has to meet our transportation goals. One practical application that has now become commonplace is the use of real-time data to receive information on transit arrivals. This convenience would not have materialized if the raw data was not made available and formatted for such a purpose. In partnership with our local tech community, we aspire to collect and release data that will decrease congestion, increase transit ridership, and active transportation opportunities. This open data program will not just benefit our transportation plans, but a host of city services, from affordable housing placement to enhancing our emergency medical response system. So I want to thank all the bureaus involved in the effort, as well as you, Mayor, for your leadership in bringing this forward today. Thank you.
Great. Good morning.
Thank you. Andrew Scott, I'm the City Budget Director, and I'm just going to provide a little bit of brief context before letting Susan and others on the team dive into some of the details. But, you know, it's exciting to have this ordinance before us, and, and, you know, I think we've all seen the stories. Big data is here. It's going to radically change everything about our lives, everything the way we present and provide city services. And I think while some of those stories might be a little bit science fiction, some of them are definitely true. And the reality is that we are today better able to use data to improve our city programs and services than we ever have been able to do in the past. Trends in data collection, trends in data visualization, and also new analytical approaches to working with that data are making performance management a really rapidly evolving field within local government. At the City Budget Office, we've been building the city's performance management program over the last few years, and as part of that process, it was really important to us that we set out to learn what other cities are doing in this area that's proven effective so that we can adopt some of those best practices. Our research in that area led us to this national initiative called What Works Cities, as the mayor and Commissioner Saltzman mentioned. The initiative, which is sponsored by Bloomberg Philanthropies, intends to support 100 mid-sized American cities, enhance their use of data and evidence to increase citizen engagement, make government more effective, and improve the lives of residents. What Works Cities began in April 2015, and they're now working with 77 cities across the country. With a letter of support from this city council, the City Budget Office applied to What Works Cities, and we were officially named last October 2016. As part of our engagement with What Works Cities, we're joining these other jurisdictions pursuing these new administrative approaches to enhancing services. Other cities that are part of this initiative include Seattle, San Francisco, Las Vegas, Denver, Kansas City, New Orleans, and also our next-door neighbor, Gresham. What Works Cities provided us with technical assistance to build our capacity to use data and evidence. Last year, bureau leaders and city council staff gathered with What Works Cities team to determine where Portland ranked on how well we do a number of things, how well we set goals for ourselves, how well we measure progress against those goals, how we take stock of things that are happening in the city, and most importantly, how we act upon the data and information we have to improve those services. As part of that site visit last year, we heard loud and clear that despite the fact that a number of our bureaus use data and analytics regularly, as a city, we struggle to work together. Bureaus from across the city expressed an interest in working collaboratively and breaking down natural silos in order to better serve our residents. A second takeaway from that meeting is that while we collect and report on data across many service areas, staff within city bureaus want to see more evidence of how this data and information is being used in decision-making. We're not alone in this challenge. This is actually, within the field, referred to, it has a title. It's referred to as the City Hall Data Gap. As an example, 70% of cities that apply to the What Works Cities program initiative state that they are committed using data and evidence to make decisions about city programs, but only about 28% actually end up modifying existing programs based on the results of data and evaluations. And I think as part of this effort, we're going to hear about ways that we can improve that and be leaders in that area. To address all the challenges that came out of that site visit, our partners at What Works Cities determined three specific scopes of work and project goals for Portland, and these were approved by council in a resolution and ordinance that was passed last September. Those three areas are, first of all, enhancing our performance management practices and continuing to build upon the work we've done there; building the capacity to apply behavioral insights and conduct low-cost evaluations to improve city programs and services; and finally, what we're going to hear a lot about today, renew our city's foundations on open data. I just want to highlight briefly a few wins that we've had from that engagement with What Works Cities. In the area of performance management, CBOs worked with a technical partner, the Center, Government Center for Excellence, to facilitate a Gator session on development review bureaus that identified strategies to accelerate housing development in the city, which is a really important, important area that I know there's been a lot of focus and attention on. In terms of low-cost program evaluations, we've actually been working with the Behavioral Insights Team, which is a consultancy internationally recognized for their work in the United Kingdom to increase tax compliance and improve workforce training outcomes. And we've worked with the Behavioral Insight Team on a number of program evaluations, ranging from encouraging emergency preparedness and better ways to engage in emergency preparedness, supporting active transportation, and finally, improving the police hiring process. We're going to come back to council in the future and discuss the complete results of our engagement with What Works Cities in more detail after we close out that work at the end of the fiscal year. As I mentioned, though, today, we're going to be focusing specifically on that third scope of that engagement, which is our effort to advance a more robust policy and practice for open data in the city. I think this work could be some of the most important that we're doing to enable the greater use of data and evidence, since that data provides the foundation for all other modern administrative practices and improvements that we hope to make. It's been a pleasure to work with Susan and Kevin and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability on this effort, and we look forward to seeing how the city and community can reap the fruits of this partnership in years to come.
Great, thank you. Susan Anderson, Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and happy to work with Andrew on this. We seem to be working on a lot together lately. As the mayor mentioned, the city actually was a kind of early adopter in this kind of work. Back in 2009, Mayor Adams kind of pushed forward this idea about open data and had a resolution. The Bureau of Technical, of Technology Services at that time developed a portal called Civic Apps, and we organized several different groups in the city, kind of worked together to develop a hackathon. We had some regional different contests and encouraged the private sector to develop new applications using Civic Apps. And so what happened was it was somewhat successful, but we didn't really have that much data opened up yet. It was pretty limited. And then I think after that first big push, it just kind of fell apart, and not much more happened. So in the past seven or eight years, even though we were kind of out there at first, other cities have just moved on ahead, and we've kind of lagged behind. What's interesting is that in the world of planners and sort of data people that have this kind of information, Portland and Metro and the PSU Population Center and others are actually kind of known for really having a lot of great quality data for the metro region. We just don't have a way to have everybody have access to it, and we need to have good protocols for how to do that. So that's what we're proposing today, to have an overall open data policy and strategy. Kevin Martin in my office and the City Budget Office, along with BTS and several others, have been working together on this. The beauty of coming a little later to the game is that a lot has been done on this. There is a lot of expertise at What Works Cities, at the Sunlight Foundation, at Johns Hopkins University, and other places that we've been able to mine and bring into what we're proposing. So the goals of the policy that we're hoping to... So the goals of the policy that we're hoping to achieve are to provide better access, increase transparency, hopefully by increasing transparency, we increase, to some extent, the openness and trust in government, improving community engagement, finding ways that people can better engage and better access information from all of the bureaus. It also will hugely reduce staff time in terms of the time it takes to respond to questions because we will all be able to access this information more easily. And then advance opportunities for innovation with private companies being able to access that data. In addition, open data is really fundamental to the work we're doing on smart cities. It's, smart cities again, is being able to use really quality data and new technologies to improve the delivery of our city services. And so as both Mayor and Commissioner Saltzman mentioned, the outcome of this is to improve how we do transportation and housing and education and environmental protection, air quality, and other areas by having access to good data. You all know that data is not the only thing that helps you make, that you base your decisions on, is community engagement. It's a lot of other pieces, but if you don't have good data to start with, you don't have a good basis for making some of those choices. And I know often, we come back to this, well, if we only had that piece of information. So I think this is a great opportunity. I want to turn it over to Kevin, Alyssa, and Shannon, who have done most of the work on this, and they'll be able to present what we're proposing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Saltzman, rest of council. I'm Kevin Martin. I'm with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I manage the Smart Cities team there, as well as the technical team. I'm joined up here by Alyssa Doom from the Sunlight Foundation, who flew out from Washington, DC to be here today. So thanks, Alyssa, and to Shannon Carney from the City Budget Office, who has been a close partner in this work.
Thank you both.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about specifically what this ordinance does and why we're doing it. Can we, oh, presentation's up there. Great. So what does this open data ordinance do? It establishes, it does three things. It establishes a general open data policy, which is that the city will be committed to the publication, accessibility, and equitable and widespread sharing of data collected and generated by all city bureaus and by private sector companies, nonprofit organizations, academic universities, and other parties working on behalf of the city. The city will strive to make data open by default. And then it creates an open data program to implement that policy and establishes a data governance team to determine the overall direction of the open data program. And to develop more specific policies and practices around data sharing and to engage external shareholders, stakeholders in program design and implementation. And sort of the scope and initial tasks of that data governance team are laid out in Exhibit A of the ordinance. So what does this open data program address? The city has no comprehensive centralized list of existing data sets and no process prioritizing or reviewing of data for release to the public. Multiple redundant data sets exist across the city, leading to issues with data consistency, data quality, version control, interoperability, and efficiency of access to information. The city currently has no system for prioritizing or connecting requests for data to our public records request system, and no process for prioritizing data that is repeatedly requested for release to the public. The amount of staff time devoted to public records requests is significant. We had more than 25,000 formal requests in 2016. And if you just guess wildly and probably underestimate wildly the amount of time staff devotes to each one of those requests and say it's an hour, that's 12 FTE of time that is spent each year just responding to public records requests, so, you know, roughly a million dollars a year. And again, that's probably a very low estimate, and that's only the formal requests we get. Does not include all the informal requests that come into the city or all the time staff spend asking other bureaus for their data. Better data management, analysis, and evaluation is a necessary foundation for Portland's smart cities efforts, as Susan mentioned, which focus on using data to inform decisions to design and evaluate policies and programs, and to partner with the private sector to meet city goals around livability, affordability, safety, sustainability, and equity. Currently, there are few data sharing mechanisms to facilitate collaboration across city bureaus and with private and nonprofit sectors, academia, the labor community, and the general public. Information relevant to city operations is increasingly being collected by the private sector, often in the public domain. The city has no consistent policies for data sharing with the private sector. City data is often designed and structured to address a single-use case, organized in files on a server, often accessible only to a single, the single individual who knows that those files are there. We kind of treat data as these, these files, these digital liabilities, rather than a resource that the entire city and the public should have access to. Good data design is not always a priority. A culture of data sharing will lead to improved data structure and content, more understandable to a wide range of users, greater use of existing standards and common formats, and more usable information and data that is more accessible to city staff and the public. And the analogy I like to use here is by sharing our data, we make it better, and we make it better by sort of being more proactive and designing it to be used. You know, when you invite people over to your house, the first thing you usually do in that house is clean it, and we have a lot of house cleaning to do with our data here in the city. When you're cleaning that house, it makes it easier if you have places to put everything, drawers to put things in, you know, containers to, for things, things aren't just laying all over the floor. We have a lot, by thinking more about sharing our data, we build those, those kind of containers into it to make it more organized. And so by making our data more open and shareable, we really improve the quality of the data that we create here in the city, which benefits us all. Who will do this work? The Bureau of Planning and Sustainability has asked for one FTE to coordinate the initial implementation. That position has been included in the Mayor's proposed budget. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. We understand that few bureaus have resources dedicated to managing and sharing of their data. So in addition to helping launch the program, that position will also assist the data generating bureaus, helping them develop policies for inventorying and sharing of their data, and to be a resource they can use to assist them with participation in the program. This position will also work with the data governance team to develop a system of governance for the open data program, and to identify resources and funding needed to implement successful and sustainable data governance in the city. Also identifying methods for engaging external stakeholders, representatives of diverse Portland communities, in the ongoing implementation of the open data program. Quickly, what specific city goals does this achieve? There are probably many that I don't list here, but a few of them, the Portland Plan, a primary goal was, of the implementation, was to coordinate processes for data collection and data analysis. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Two, Policy 211 states that the city will encourage publication, accessibility, and widespread data sharing of data collected and generated by the city. The city's racial inequity goals and strategies, one of them is improved access to data to measure the success of specific programmatic and policy changes, and to develop baselines, set goals, and measure progress. Finally, from me, what are some of the community benefits? There are many. I think these are sort of the big three. It empowers our residents by giving them greater access to usable information about city decisions, policy, and services. Really, information is increasingly power, and by sharing our information, we distribute that power. It provides the public increased transparency into the effectiveness of city programs and policies. It levels the playing field by making data about city operations more widely available not to, not just to those with connections or expertise. It fosters a culture of collaboration by providing information that the community can act upon, and by developing systems that support two-way sharing of information and feedback, like a 311 system. Internally, data collected about and by Portland residents is more structured and consistent and made more widely available throughout the city. More proactive city decisions that are formed by data and evaluated against data improves our city programs and the quality and delivery of our services. And the local tech community gets access to data they can use to help solve Portland's most pressing issues, to boost economic development, and to build ladders of opportunity for our community through innovative uses of data and technology. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Alyssa to talk about the perspective from the Sunlight Foundation. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alyssa Doom, and I'm the Open Data Project Manager with the Sunlight Foundation. Sunlight is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization based in DC, and we advocate for transparency and accountability in government through open data. And I had the opportunity to work with Shannon and Kevin on the city's open data ordinance as a part of the What Works Cities project. And so as a part of What Works Cities, at this point, it's been about two years, or just over two years, I have worked with over 30 cities, helping them to craft and build support for the implementation of their open data policies, including Seattle, San Jose, Tacoma, Boulder, Anchorage, Kansas City, Kansas, the list goes on and on. And I've seen a lot in terms of open data all across the country. And so I just wanted to say a few words about the work that Portland is doing based upon this experience. So Portland is really very unique in that it was the first city, as you, as you all know, and has been said today, to adopt an open data resolution in the country, and the first city to have an open data portal. The city already collects a great deal of structured data and has a foundation in place for an open data program, and the civic tech community is extremely active here. I was able to see this firsthand when I attended the Hack Oregon event on Monday night at OMC. And I guess based on my experience, I would say that all of the other cities that I've been working with would be very envious to have a group of people that are that dedicated to using city data to improve their community. It was a really incredible experience. And so this ordinance really just builds upon all of the great work that's already been done here. And Sunlight Foundation, through our work with cities all across the country, has developed a set of open data policy guidelines. We have 31 guidelines that are sort of our best practices in open data policy that we've seen in researching the way that policies work across the country. And so this, this draft ordinance would take, would take, or would add an additional 20, or I should say, an additional 12 open data best practices to the resolution that exists already. And, and some of these best practices are, include prioritizing the release of data based on things like public records requests, as Kevin mentioned earlier. Also safeguarding sensitive information, really just implementing practices to make sure that confidential and secure data is, remains that way, and kind of creating a balanced test between risks versus benefits of releasing certain data sets. And also just creating a process to standardize the way that data is collected across city bureaus. Right now, as, as we've said, there's a lot of work being done, but a lot of that is in an ad hoc way. And so the, the Governance Committee that is a part of this open data ordinance would help to create that process. And then I just wanted to say that there are two sort of unique ways that the ordinance stands out, and the first is that it promotes a regional network to share data and to create regional data standards. And this is, this is work that we see as becoming increasingly important, and, and we see this, having worked with cities all across the country, just being able to share data between cities and, and between different institutions within the region, I think is really important to, to seeing the full potential that open data has to offer. And then the second thing that I wanted to mention is that the ordinance asks that the Governance Team develop contract provisions to ensure that the city maintains ownership of the data collected on behalf of the city. And this is, I mean, things like the data that are collected with smart city sensors, all different kinds of data are collected by those organizations that the city procures from. And so this will really help, being able to have access to this data will really help to, help, help the city better manage infrastructure and make policy decisions. And so with an existing and active network of data consumers in the city, with a, with a good foundation already in place, and then with access to the What Works Cities peer network, which is, as, as was mentioned earlier, 77 cities and going strong, the city will have, have the opportunity to reach out to all of these different other cities that are working on similar, or that are facing similar challenges in implementing their open data programs and policies to help answer any questions that they have moving forward. So Portland will be well poised to realize the full potential of open data upon adopting this ordinance. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. So my name is Shannon Carney, and again, I'm from the City Budget Office. And so I'm here to say a few words today about a more unsung benefit to open data. So we all know that opening up access to our data is intended to be a, really a catalyst for nonprofit partners and universities, community advocates that are interested in civic innovation. And there's another, another beneficiary of open data, and that's, and that's the internal bureaus of the city of Portland. It's often the case that the biggest beneficiary of open data policy is, is paradoxically the organization that's making that data accessible to others, and that's what we call the internal value of open data. So how could that possibly be, right? And I am sure it's not, it's not hard for you to imagine that it's fairly cumbersome for, you know, an average employee of the city of Portland to, to, to get data from another bureau, potentially as cumbersome as it would be to get from an outside agency. Typically, it calls a call, requires a call or an email, maybe even setting up a meeting in person to advocate for why you might need a report that would be available via a typical records request. In fact, according to a McKinsey report, it was published a few years ago, employees in, in organizations of all types spend 1.8 hours every day, and that's 9.3 hours per week if we're counting, on average, just searching and gathering information. So that same report found that a searchable record of knowledge, like an open data portal, can reduce that amount of time by as much as 35%. So Portland's information is, and is captured and managed by systems with names that some of us will recognize, names like BRAS, SAP, Kayanta, and Trax. But data is the universal language that runs through all of those systems. If we, as a city, can move from being an organization that's organized around our systems to one that's organized around our data, then opportunities for improving our, our programs and services become much more available to us. Any information that's saved on individual desktops or bureau-specific server folders make the matter much worse, and that siloed information is not accessible to the rest of the city. It means that other employees will waste time duplicating, duplicating work, or worse, that services just aren't delivered at all. And that was the case on, on the issue of accelerating housing development. It really prevented the city from understanding what the drivers were for accelerating development until a recent Gator Substitution on that topic. So in sum, ensuring that as much information is stored as centrally as possible really enables our employees to tap into that collective knowledge of our city. And it's an approach that supports the use of evidence in decision-making that's really central to making a more effective, yet affordable, government. And so a lot of people ask me, what are these opportunities? How are we going to be using this, this type of data and improving our everyday work? And I have a few examples to share, some of which we're already deploying here in the city. So the first is the low-cost program evaluation that Director Scott talked about earlier. So this approach is, is one that the city of Louisville used to address their over $1.1 million in unpaid parking fines. Using the approach, that city changed a notification letter, and some of you have heard about this example, but I just think it's a great one. They drew on behavioral insights to provide a clearer call to action in a final notification letter that increased the rate of repayment by 10.5%, the response rate. And that's resulted in that city gaining over $100,000 per year in, from what they were in, in revenue from those parking fines. It's using predictive analytics, and that's where in New Orleans, officials there turned a terrible fire tragedy in that city into a better service for all citizens by creating a model that helps firefighters identify which homes are most at risk of having a non-functioning smoke detector, and, and contacting the homes in those areas to offer a free installation. It's using performance-based contracting, where in Seattle, Washington, that city is using this approach to more actively manage their homeless services contracts. And it's used in process improvement, where the city of Denver is tracking their time saved and doing small innovations and translating that into dollars saved for citizens of that community. And finally, it's used in performance management. We're here in Portland, a Gator session last year brought executive attention and, and a new look into existing data around patrol staffing levels around the city, and real call to action that has resulted in some real results. So where the bureau had hired 20 sworn staff through last fiscal year, as of early April, the bureau had hired 47 sworn positions and retained 15 this year. So that's some good progress. So in sum, in an era of expanding community need, data and analytics is, is a way, and perhaps the way, to improve our productivity even more than adding additional staff. In many cases, we already have the necessary analytical skill and enthusiasm to conduct this kind of, the projects I've described. And I know that there's been over 50 employees that have requested to be a part of our Tableau User Group, and, and that's a group of, of analysts that are working on data visualization techniques and understanding of, of city data. And recent events on program evaluation and process improvement were oversubscribed by city staff. But this But this missing piece is what we're addressing here today, and that's that many analysts don't have ready access to data outside of their immediate program or bureau. It's really strange when you realize that there's really no city service or program that is a single bureau offering. We're dependent on our internal services, and we have cross-cutting issues that we're incorporating, like equity and sustainability. I think it's really our duty to the residents of Portland that we make our data available so that we can mine this wealth of data and turn it into a wealth of insight. Any mistakes, wasted effort, these things are representative of resources that could be programmed and better able to serve residents of Portland. And I think, to the degree that we're doing this, it's impacting the neediest in our community most. So when we can make our government more efficient, we can help more people and make our community better. So I am so thrilled to be working on this project, and thank you for this opportunity to work on the project with our What Works Cities partners, and happy to support Bureau of Planning and Sustainability in this effort. I really believe that it will help transform our city's workforce into a greater source for good in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, I want to bring up Skip Newberry from the Technology Association of Oregon, and Kat Nikolovski from Hack Oregon, to give us a perspective from the private sector and the local tech community.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right. Good morning, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Skip Newberry. I'm the president and CEO of the Technology Association of Oregon. We're a tech trade association that works with about four hundred and twenty tech and tech-enabled companies in the region, and ranges from very large companies to early-stage startups. I want to talk a little bit about the significance of this ordinance for economic development outcomes, as well as talent in the region. In terms of economic development in the area of smart cities, a clearly-defined open data policy enables the city to really proactively define how it wants to work with the private sector in developing solutions that benefit residents here. In partnership with local companies, TriMet's developing a multimodal transit app that integrates well with both rideshare and bike-share programs, and that's a perfect example of what's possible with this type of an approach. In the area of entrepreneurship, back in civic apps for Greater Portland days in 2009 and subsequently, there are a number of examples of companies that were formed from some of the hackathons and data sprints that were enacted as part of that. One of them, for example, is GeoLoke, which is a geolocation-focused startup that was acquired by Esri, that became the basis for Esri's Portland office. Apps such as PDX Bus, which was utilized heavily subsequently, were developed as a result of that effort as well. And it also, I think, really helps to improve public services. Cities that are seen as attractive to tech talent and companies are seen as having great digital infrastructure, and, you know, a focus on a comprehensive open data policy helps to further those objectives and keep Portland competitive. In the area of talent development, the technology industry created about twenty thousand net new jobs in the region in the last five years. And as we're looking to prepare local folks for those positions, students and professionals, this represents a tremendous opportunity to give them applied learning opportunities, solving problems that they understand and appreciate that are in their own backyards. So local colleges and universities we work with are often looking for capstone projects for their students to give them real-world training alongside tech companies. This is a perfect case in point. And at the high school level, we're seeing a lot of interest from students. Engagement levels go through the roof. When they're able to define a problem they want to apply technology to solve, and this is a perfect case of that. I want to next turn it over to Kat from Hack Oregon, because I think they represent a really interesting, almost ideally situated program here in the Portland area to help train students, as well as professionals, in the latest data visualization and coding skills to make them competitive. Kat?
Thank you, Skip. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'll briefly describe Hack Oregon. I'm the founder and executive director. We've been around for about four years, working on open data technology with the community in Portland. And we essentially are driven by a massive volunteer engagement of individuals who often are at the top of the field in tech and creative industries locally, but we also have quite a few people who are looking at open data as an opportunity to learn how to build advanced analytic systems. Because, of course, in order to work with data in a way that you can get meaningful insight, it takes a huge team. And this is something that, when you have open data, creates an opportunity for this call to action, where if you succeed, you end up with insight that actually can help the place that you live in. And so this is something in Oregon, which is completely unique across the country, is that we don't just put together quick weekend hackathons. We actually are building advanced systems that can help to make an affordable solution to the how of some of what's going to happen once we can improve our open data frameworks with the city. What do you do with that data? Building visual, interactive data portals, so Civic Apps, was not as easy to use as we might have liked, but in preparation for an ordinance like this passing, Hack Oregon's call to action for this year was actually to think about what a updated, cutting-edge open data portal would look like. And I think that what citizens and what government would want to see is something that's visual, something that's easy to use, something that has an applied type of insight toward big issues that people are thinking about, and has that opportunity to build what we think of as integration, or these synapses of points of connections between bureaus. And, you know, for example, we worked with the Housing Bureau to take their state of housing report and make it something that you can understand visually, interact with, it's empathetic, but that we also added new data to that. And we were looking at pulling historic voter registration to see where people had been living and where people had actually been moving, so we can understand a little bit more about what's happening in the city. We worked also with the Joint Office of Homeless Services, and perhaps we weren't able to bring a lot of new data there, but we were able to take the data they did have that was in a form that was difficult to understand, full of things that you can't share with the public because of privacy concerns, and take the story for everybody who has been working with homelessness, and make that something that the public can engage with a little bit more. And we also worked with PBOT to help to create a conflict reporter. They don't always have the ability to properly track and manage where different construction projects are happening. Just with open data, working with them, we could build that program all with citizens that can help to track those and save money. These are just, of course, with the budget office, we took something which is a six-hundred-page printout to understand the Portland city budget, which is something we talk about a lot, in this room especially, and make it so that you actually can be empowered with being able to browse through and really visualize and understand what the budget means. And what's important in our approach to doing this is not only that we're incredibly inclusive and that we're matching up these different technical resources to empower new people to get into the industry, to expand people's advanced skills, but that we're essentially a neutral, nonpartisan organization that doesn't have a lot of stake in, you know, what the actual outcomes are. What we care is just to be able to see farther and present people with their own information so that they can come to engage in an honest way. Because sometimes, open data will show you that something you think is true actually is true, and sometimes, it will show you something completely different that you didn't expect. But it's important that we have the ability to have that information at our fingertips, and that once we make the decision to create a common language that data can be open, then we can start to explore all of these new innovative ways that we can apply that information. And with the help of groups like Hack Oregon, looking to open source, we have built a platform that will actually help to make all of the visual interactivity reproducible faster, accessible and inexpensive for government to be able to actually work with. So that some of these solutions don't have to be really expensive and confusing. We actually can lead the way here in Oregon by making everything that we build a model for other cities to do the same thing.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Commissioner Fishy.
Since Kat's here, I want to embarrass her a little bit. I was part of a large city contingent that was at OMC Monday, watching, witnessing the presentation, and it was a full house at OMC. And I am not the most technologically savvy person on the council, but by the end of the evening, I became a true believer in what the potential is for open data and partnerships with organizations like Hack Oregon. It turned out that the Audience Award at the end of the night was for the presentation that related to the Fire Bureau. And there was some astonishing data that they came up with on the Fire Bureau. But I was also really taken by some of the findings and some of the reporting around homelessness. And it occurred to me that we often struggle with defining what's the right metrics that we use at budget time. And a group of volunteers crunching data came up with actually a set of metrics, which I think are more useful than some of the ones that we currently use, or at least Andrew and I can have that debate. But it was terrific, and so I compliment you for all your work. But I also want to say that a highlight of the evening for me was the eighty-four-year-old gentleman I sat next to. And he was very modest, and his daughter was very modest, until I put two and two together. His name is Paul Cameron. And those of you old enough to know, he was the, one of the great running backs at UCLA in college football in the 50s. He was the runner-up for the Heisman Trophy Award. He was drafted by the Pittsburgh Steelers and ended up being a defensive back for them and had a great career, and then went on to another celebrated career. He's also Kat's dad. So it was kind of cool. It's the first time I've been in the presence of college football royalty. He flew up from California to watch his daughter do this presentation, or actually, your grandfather.
He's my father.
Excuse me, your dad. Let me get it right. But congratulations for that whole event, and I know all the city people that were there were very proud to play a role.
Thank you.
I have a question for Kat. You mentioned some projects that you did with the city or with city data. Can people find those on Civic Apps, or?
So we did a demo on Monday night just for the theater, and it will be live at civicpdx.org. Everyone will be able to see the program that we built. It's also meant to be scalable, but we've published every single piece of data in sort of its own discrete form, but it connects to other things. And so you can imagine how you would add in new pieces of data in that type of visual way, and all of the code is open source, available, can be used to create new stories as we start to add things from what we want to do next, but also, other cities can use this as a model for, you know, really the only completely open-source, visual, open data portal that exists, built by people that live in Portland as volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we get to testimony, if you'll humor me, I just wanted to run through some thank yous real quick. There were over a hundred and fifty people that reviewed this ordinance since we started writing it in October. Folks from bureaus across the city, transportation, Portland Police Bureau, Portland Development Commission, as well as folks outside the city. Andrew and his team at City Budget's office in particular have been an incredible asset. Shannon, this is all really her brainchild, and so she's really the reason we're all sitting here today. City attorneys, Colleen Taylor and Jennifer Johnson for keeping it all above board. BTS, Bureau of Technology Services, Jeff Barron and his team, despite all that they have going on with the data center move and the Portland building move, really devoted a lot of their time to improving this ordinance, giving this guidance and feedback. And I also want to acknowledge everything that the Bureau of Technology Services has done since 2009 to move us forward on open data and data governance. OMF, Tom's team, Celia Heron in particular, and Betsy Ames, just helped me, a novice ordinance writer, really get this over the finish line. Chris Smith of the Planning and Sustainability Commission, his policy 211 in the comp plan was really the spark that led us to this day of moving forward on an open data program and policy. Mayor Wheeler and your staff for putting some resources into implementation in our smart cities work in general. Commissioner Saltzman, your chief of staff, Brendan Finn, for being a champion of open data and data-driven decision-making since the day he arrived in City Hall many, many years ago, and frustratingly, not seeming to age a day since he got here. And finally, especially Alyssa Doom at the Sunlight Foundation, her name sounds like a superhero, and she has been a superhero in this effort. Absolutely would not have been able to get it done without her, so wanted to thank her. And with that, I think we're done.
Thank you. So we're going to move to public testimony, and folks, we have twelve more agenda items, including some fairly substantive ones. I don't like doing this, but in the interest of time, I'm going to have to limit public testimony to two minutes rather than the typical three. And I'm sorry about that, but as I just said, we have a very full agenda and not enough time to do it. Please call the first three.
And we have ten, we have a total of ten people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Chris Smith, Lee Coats, and Charles Bridge Crane Johnson.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Chris Smith, and I'm vice chair of the Planning and Sustainability Commission, but I want to emphasize that I'm testifying as an individual citizen today. I am a longstanding cheerleader and participant for open data. I had the honor of serving as a judge in the first Portland Open Data Contest back in 2009. I was one of the first developers to get access to TriMet's open data and still run an open, still run a nonprofit project that's placed about fifty transit arrival screens out in the community, and building lobbies, and cafes, and other places that are publicly accessible. You know, I urge you to adopt this ordinance. While the commission I serve on has not formally reviewed this or made a recommendation, what I can say is that during the development of the comp plan, the PSC recommended a very strong open data policy. That ultimately was a little bit more general because the city attorney wasn't comfortable with potentially casting open data as a land use decision, but I can say that the principles that the PSC supported then are very much the ones reflected in this ordinance, and this ordinance is almost exactly what I would have wanted in implementing ordinance for that comp plan recommendation. So I am very happy to see this. And I would finally add greetings from CSV Comp, which is an open data conference, an international open data conference, happening here in Portland today, and there were several folks who said they would be here this morning to testify if they weren't tied up at the conference, so please accept their good wishes. Thank you, and I hope you adopt this.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lee Coats. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioner Saltzman, for introducing the ordinance. We're at a historic junction between technology and government, and your consideration in this matter is critical and appreciated. I'm here today to encourage City Council to adopt the open data ordinance. I've lived and worked in this region for many years, and I'm here to show that Portland citizens support the council committing resources and organizational sponsorship on this matter. While living here, I've had the opportunity to work with several surrounding jurisdictions and other local organizations in a technical way. Open data is usually a big topic of conversation, but not something that has received a lot of traction on the ground in day-to-day work. There seems to almost be a reticence to commit to it despite the intuition that it is the right thing to do. And however, while working with various municipalities in Oregon, a common theme that emerges is, well, what is Portland doing? And the work that the city has already done is very encouraging, and it's tremendous. Now, looking at the proposed plan, I think it can really add to the work that has already been done, because without a formal commitment to open data, it's hard for other surrounding jurisdictions to see real ways that it can be implemented. And so while I thank the budget office and the Office of Planning and Sustainability for all the work they've put into this, I'm here today to urge you guys to vote, because it's going to take top-down sponsorship and a commitment of time and resources to make this work. And I just want to let you know, other jurisdictions are watching and hoping that, you know, this plan, an ordinance like this, can really, you know, blaze the trail into that junction between technology and government, and you have the support of the citizenship. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Charles Johnson, Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. And sometimes, I'm a fan of non-monetized things, that we sometimes put too many dollar signs and look at too many things by dollar signs. But when we're talking about open data, we should have some ethical consistency in that the openness should let us follow the money. But I don't think we got a visual budget. A visual budget would be one where we can see the nice little pie chart and find out exactly what percent of the city budget is consumed by the Portland Police Bureau. And then when you click on that little pie piece, you're able to drill down. Those people over there at that particular bureau sometimes aren't the biggest fans of open data. So when, you know, different people are interested in different data, open data for different reasons. Some people see monetization, some people see it as a And then when you click on that little pie piece, you're able to drill down. Those people over there at that particular bureau sometimes aren't the biggest fans of open data. So when, you know, different people are interested in different data— open data for different reasons. Some people see monetization, some people see it as a tool to influence public policy in different— in different ways. My primary belief is that we can use open data for a lot of things, including ending the killing of black and brown people by our police department, that we can drill down on the Portland Police Bureau and find out how many cops have killed two people, how many cops have killed zero people, and then ask ourselves the ethical questions from that data. Do we keep cops that kill people when the statistical practice is that the best cops don't kill people? So the ordinance—or I'm not sure if it's an ordinance or a resolution that we're— it's an ordinance to advance— you know, it's definitely worth advancing, but I'm not hearing the bridging—the equity lens bridging between how open data is going to deliver to the people who need the most from the city, the people that are in vulnerable communities, the people that are in East Portland, the people that have been gentrified out. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, Andrew, the Tableau is online now, isn't it, for the proposed budget?
Yes.
And can you tell me where people can access that, and I'll say it on the record?
Yeah, portlandoregon.gov/cbo.
There is actually a new Tableau platform that does all of the budget for all of the different bureaus by percentages charts, and you can actually hover over each of the line items and get a longer narrative description of what each of those items is. So I'd encourage people to check it out. We're always happy to get feedback and commentary on that. It's a beta, so it's not a completed product, but we want to get your feedback. Thank you for your testimony. Next three, please.
Our Phoenix Hip, Grace Hip, and Willow Hip.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Phoenix Grace, Willow's mom. This is their first time in front of City Council.
Excellent.
And I'm feeling kind of afraid, as is Willow. She's coming forward.
No worries. If you could just say your name into the microphone and speak your piece. Thank you for being here.
They would like me to introduce them in context with—
Please. Could you do it into the microphone, because it's hard for people who are watching?
You bet. Would you like me to introduce themselves first?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Grace.
My name is Phoenix.
I'm Willow.
The kids are here to speak to the importance of transparency with the Portland Police Department and a commitment to the truth about what goes on in the streets. These children have been to numerous rallies and protests as part of a peaceful contingent, and again and again and again, they have witnessed unspeakable atrocities by the police department. On Monday, they did not—we did not attend the May Day rally. The kids went to school. On their way home from school, they take the bus to get through downtown Portland. They were on a TriMet bus when what— when they looked out, there were riot police everywhere. My children said that's— that's all they could see was riot police indiscriminately attacking people. I will let them take it from there. It was their eyewitness, not mine.
Phoenix, you're first.
So, you know, thank you for being here and testifying, and I would simply ask you kids to remember what we are testifying on here today. I will let the children speak.
Transparency is what we're here for.
Thank you. Good morning.
Phoenix.
So we—I was coming back from school on the MAX, and we were driving on the MAX, and they were like—they were like riot cops. They were like driving by, a bunch. I looked out my window, and I saw just riot cops everywhere, and then I said to Steve, why is there a bunch of riot cops? And he said, it's May Day. And I'm like, what's May Day? And he's like, eh. And they were like beating people up, running after people. And I looked out my window, and they were like running after people and beating them up.
Thank you.
Grace. I will.
Thank you.
Um, when we were coming back from school that day, all I saw—I looked out the window, and all I saw was like people getting hurt and the cops like running after everyone. And I looked down this one street, and there was like smoke everywhere, and I think someone was like— one of the cops were like putting tear grass everywhere, and I saw them running after like homeless people and stuff and trying to hurt them. And, yeah.
How did you feel?
I felt scared, and I don't like the cops when—I don't like them now because I thought they were going to be here to like help people, not hurt people.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your testimony.
Go, Willow. Just go.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing as Phoenix.
Go.
Honey, you don't have to testify. If you don't feel comfortable, you certainly don't have to.
Yeah, I saw the same thing as them.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next three are Michael—I believe it's Darrow— Star— The next three are Steve Esses, Michael—I believe it is Darrow or Duro, and Star Stauffer. Steve Esses, Michael Duro, and Star.
I think—
Go ahead, take Wayne Wigness then.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Steve Esses. I had some questions about the open data and the use for it. It sounds good, but there's many things that have sounded good, and there doesn't seem to be much real accountability for the information. So I'm curious. The Portland Police Department reached an agreement with the Justice Department over some improvements that they can make, and the Police Department itself gathered some pretty impressive data on why they needed to comply. And yet, they've been stonewalling and refusing to implement these—the this program of improvement for years. The civilian review board process has been stymied and hampered. There's all kinds of things like this. And what I'm concerned about is that technocrats and possibly the Police Department and others may just simply use this, avoid the real virtues of open data to make people accountable for what they're doing, and to really engage the public in this process of what it means to be part of a community and part of the government, and to politicize it. In other words, are the police free to demonize dissidents? Are they free to brutalize dissidents? From what I see, that this information on the role of the police in the black community and the brown community and among the poor communities was open. The information was there. It's only the rise of groups like Don't Shoot Portland and Black Lives Matter that seems to bring this to the forefront, that this information has not been utilized at all.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Star Stauffer. This is a— this is a great idea, except that we all know how the Police Department works. We also especially know how the Portland Police Department works. My curiosity in regards to what they've agreed to share is, what do they get to decide what they're going to share, because then that's not really open data or public record. Not only that, how are the police utilizing this function to profile in vulnerable communities? I want to know how the police are utilizing this function to profile protesters, since we know how this council feels about people utilizing their constitutional rights to free speech, and we certainly know how the police feel, especially if people of color are utilizing their rights to free speech. I would like to know how we determine whether or not the information provided by the Portland Police to this open data source is corrupt. How do we know it's false? How do we know the accuracy of it, since we know that police commonly falsify reports and/or leave out information on reports? So they falsify by omission. How do we verify the validity of this information that's coming from the police in regards to how they're functioning in our communities? Are we going to get to see logs? Does that include evidence logs, utilization of police vehicles, the firing of weapons? How many police are in each neighborhood? What those police look like? How many years of training? Their records of brutality and excessive use of force? I mean, it goes on and on and on. I want to—I mean, does this account for every single bullet that's spent at every firing range or city street? How is this information gotten from the Police Department? How do we know that you're actually delving in and making them more transparent? Because we hear the word transparency, but it's a lot like the word diversity. It sounds good on paper, but really what diversity means is backdoor racism. So what's the backdoor evil intent of this that the police are going to use?
Thank you. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Wayne Wigness. I just read a book called Social Physics by a researcher at MIT, a big data researcher. He showed that the rate—that ideas spread throughout society is directly proportional to the number of face-to-face contacts, you know? And the correlation he came up with is unheard of in the social sciences. So like, you know, business practices changing, cultural individual habits changing. And he attributed this to evolutionary group behavior, you know? Like gorillas in the hills, they don't move out until they hear a call from everybody. And the same kind of tipping point behavior occurs in humans when we're exposed face-to-face. And so you can imagine what a kick I got out of it, you know? Because I'm always crying about bunk beds, and you know, my large-scale bunk housing, my argument goes deeper beyond homelessness and gentrification. It's about the concept of shared space, as it decreases with development, it produces profound economic and social shifts. So that's just one example of how big data produced tangible evidence for one reasonable argument. And that makes it that much more likely that we make reasonable decisions, right? But imagine what it could do for the social consciousness. I mean, you give people, you know, data, observable data that they can chew on, and that takes the public deliberation out of the realm of degenerate speculation and opinion, and it turns it into productive proof disprove. For example, I was just at a board meeting at PSU, and I had to listen to people say in— separated by one sentence, they asked—they're—in one sentence, they're arguing, I want $15 an hour for school employees. And in the next sentence, they said, and I want reduced tuition. Like, you can't have one without taking from the other. This is a prime example of how, you know, people have not been forced to think about how—they haven't had access to the numbers. They have not been forced to think about things, you know, and they have not been forced to see things on a more causal level. Same thing applies with the Police Department. The more fundamental question is, what caused us to lose our leverage against police in the first place? We shouldn't be asking, you know, pointing the finger at individual cops for what is a systemic issue. Reason has been lost, is what I'm saying. And big data, I'm just here to say I'm excited about it, because it can restore reason. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony, all three of you. Thank you. Next three, please.
The last two who signed up are Michael Duro and Mary Ann Schwab.
My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Super Watchdog X. Mayor Wheeler, if you ever try to silence the voices of children ever again during public communication, I guarantee I will begin a recall effort on you immediately. Do not ever silence children based upon the content of their speech when they're redressing their grievances to the government. Never do that. Now, moving on. Bring the sunshine down upon the data. Now, the reality is this: The data is only as good that we receive. If we don't receive it, if we don't have transparency, if we don't have access to it, if we can't get that data to the public, it doesn't mean anything. You protect your data. You protect your interests as a municipal corporation. You protect yourself from liability, and we know that. We want your data. We want the data on the Clinton Foundation. So this Sunlight Foundation that was doing an investigation on her to put her in jail will back off when Bloomberg gives them grant money to do other things, because they want her elected. That's what the real world is. Research it and look at it. Bloomberg, number one, should have never been a mayor. He should have been removed. Why? Because he has conflicts of interest with his business entities. Look at Donald Trump. You want to remove him right now because of conflict of interest? Why didn't you remove Mayor Bloomberg? Mayor Bloomberg, guess what? You're the reason why Donald Trump will never be impeached on that. Now, issue number two. This Hack Oregon, impressive work. Now, let me say this to you. If you really want to do something for this community, figure out how we're going to store the data on body cams and get these body cams on these police officers so we can have the information and the data to make sure that violence will de-escalate in this city and these young kids back here won't be so afraid to speak out to the mayor and say, I'm scared of these police. Now, what are you going to do about it?
Thank you.
Don't ever silence their voices.
Good morning.
Thank you very much. Ever!
Thank you. Good morning, Mary Ann. Welcome to my world. Good morning.
Thank you, everyone. My name's Mary Ann Schwab. I'm a southeast community advocate for a number of years, and when you talk about open publication, I want to address three points with you here today. Number one, when we had really an upside-down 15-year maintenance, much like our Commissioner Udaley, all of a sudden into housing, we really tried to work with Nick Novak and wanted the formula he used when it was 50% residents, 1% the railroad, 49% businesses. We waited 53 days for that data. It didn't come, so we filed suit. We were in court, shook hands, and I want you to know that data cost us $2,500. It was never returned. We, as a public, did not know that you had to ask for the dollars back. I was one that helped contribute towards that data, and I find that offensive, and I want to make sure that's not intended in this document. The second thing I want to talk about is I tried to go to Lewis and Clark College to read a paper copy of the city charter. Their last paper copy is 2009. They suggested I go to the city archives, so I called to make sure I could make an appointment with their librarian to help me research. They had the same. So they suggested I go here to the auditor's office, thinking surely she has a paper copy. My concern, in this high-tech, all its energy, people my age don't have access, most of them, to computers. We like to read a paper copy. And not having that available, I think, is something—it's a word of caution. We need to have that in our archival data. And I want to also thank you—I would hope that no one, no other neighborhood has to pay for data from one borough to another. This silo business must, must stop. And furthermore, with your budget, I'm hearing you say during Mount Tabor Public Review that it is still a draft. I'm not going to give up until Far 59 on May 31st. The city can give them a dollar for this and keep this memorandum open. And Amanda Fritz, this is one time we need to talk, and I'm not going to bid on the League of Women Voter Luncheon to meet with you. I can't do that. The bid would be so high. And, sir, I have been waiting to meet in your office since February 8th. I've been here every Friday since, and I still can't get 15 minutes with His Honor, the mayor. I am—my feelings are hurt. Thank you.
Wait, Kristen? Where is Kristen?
I'm Mrs. Schwab.
Can you meet today at 5:00?
I have to come back, because I have to go home and check my—
We'll make it happen, Mary Ann.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
And Mrs. Schwab, of course, you're always welcome to come and meet with me.
Good afternoon. How are you doing?
My name is Michael Duro. I'm a longtime activist in Portland. I first came here October 13th, in 1977, with my mother and my father. My father was in the Air Force. My mother's from Denmark, and I was born in Denmark.
I'm sorry. Is the mic on? Is the green light on there?
No, sorry. My name is Michael Duro. I'm a longtime Portland activist. I live in northeast Portland, saving—
We'll make it happen, Mary Ann.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
And Mrs. Schwab, of course, you're always welcome to come and meet with me.
Good afternoon. How are you doing?
My name is Michael Duro. I'm a longtime activist in Portland. First came here October 13th, moved in August 7th with my mother and my father. My father's in the Air Force. My mother's from Denmark, and I was born in Denmark.
I'm sorry. Is the mic on? Is the green light on there?
No, sorry. My name is Michael Duro. I'm a longtime Portland activist. I live in northeast Portland, same house, same place, 37 years now. Living house is my mother, but I'm not a buster. I'm actually, I think I'm a boomer, but I might be a buster. My point here today does not have to do very much with the Portland police, but I do wish to talk to you about the Portland police because I've been assaulted by the Portland police at least twice this year. Once they falsely imprisoned me also for 15 days. No habeas corpus. But we need to talk. I don't want to see you. I just want to talk. The data is in the details, and we need the data. The devil's in the details, and we need the data. The cops need the cameras, and we need to see what's on them, preferably live, so we can do something about it. Because if we see it afterwards, like with Rodney King, people get hurt, streets burn, and we don't want, we don't want our city to look like ours. We really don't. This is the most beautiful city in the United States. I dare say it's one of the most beautiful cities in the world. And I've seen cities. I've been to Istanbul. I've been to Copenhagen. I've been to Berlin. I've been to London. This is a beautiful city, and there's some really great people here. There's some really crappy people moving in and taking over. I love those people too, but, you know, you get the details. This can be solved with open source data. This can be solved in a year, actually. We need to port our data. We need to put it in the cloud, all of our data. We need to put it in a high-dup infrastructure, and we need to protect who accesses it, not whether or not to access, but we need to know who accesses it. Google can do this. I'm a Google reseller, and you don't need to talk to me, but you need to put your data in the cloud, please.
Michael, can I ask you a quick question? Just a yes or no. Do you think there's an urgency in implementing this as soon as possible?
You know what? The city is close to burning down.
But do you want us to move to implement this as quickly as possible?
Yes.
That's all I need.
I've been working on this since '96.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick.
And, Michael, if you could do me a favor and leave your contact information for us to have a talk with you.
Yeah, I will, I will. Oh, by the way, I represented Bernie in the DNC.
Oh, very cool.
We didn't win because there's too many liars on both sides. There's a liar in the White House, and there was a liar running against him, and the liar with more money managed to kick the system.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Commissioner Fish?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With the benefit of the city attorney. Mayor, I think there is a benefit to having us implement this policy as quickly as possible, including some of the action items that are called for, so I would move that we place an emergency on this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Commissioner Fish to move as an emergency ordinance. There was a second. It was a close contest, but I'm going to give it to Commissioner Fritz today.
She always beats me.
Any further discussion?
May I have the remainder of my time?
You have 10 seconds? Sure, go for it.
Yes, I would like that part, that we get that part. I'm a Realtor. I can fix that deal. I don't currently have my license, but I know people that can, we can at least retain our option on the part so that people can buy it for themselves.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much, everybody.
So the amendment is on the table. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Is your glasses on the table?
Michael, don't forget your glasses there.
Oh, by the way, I lost my laptop. It's black, Asus or whatever. It's a Chromebook. If you have it and you took it, it was in the bathroom, don't play with it. Just wipe it or destroy it because it'll destroy your local network.
Thank you, Michael. So is there any further conversation on the amendment?
No.
Please call the roll on the amendment.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
And the reason is for the urgency, as Commissioner Fish said, aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. So now to the main motion. Are there any further questions of staff or any further comments on the part of the city council before we call the roll? Seeing none, please call the roll on the main motion as amended.
Fish?
I'm sorry that Dan is not here, but I want to thank Commissioner Saltzman and the mayor for bringing this forward. I also want to acknowledge the work that Dan's chief of staff, Brendan, has brought to this for a long time and not just when they were commissioners in charge of one of the relevant bureaus. I want to thank our friends at the Bureau of Planning Sustainability and the Budget Office for their partnership in taking the lead. I want to thank the young woman who came here from DC from the Sunshine Foundation and all the guidance they've given us over time. I would like to thank Catherine and Hack Oregon for demonstrating to us the significant public value of opening data and allowing a civic hack process to unfold organically. And the bureaus that I have the honor of leading are going to want to be part of the next conversation about how to open up some of our data. I think ultimately today, what is before us is another way to advance some core values of our city around access and transparency, empowering the public with new tools, and then ultimately being accountable. And when we get those right, there's greater public trust in our work. So I am very proud today to support the work of my colleagues. Aye.
Udaley?
I'm really excited about this ordinance since I've gotten to City Hall. I've been beating the drum about how the city needs to be doing a better job getting information out to the public, and this is definitely next-level accessible information. Our data should be accessible to everyone to access, use, and share as they wish. It's going to benefit our offices. I have also had challenges obtaining data that we've wanted from bureaus. It'll benefit our bureaus, business, academics, researchers, activists, organizers, and the general public. I share some of the concerns expressed by community members because our data, this is only as useful as the data we're collecting. So I am particularly interested in what data the police bureau is going to offer. I think the community has made it very clear that they want more transparency and more accountability. And I would be remiss if I didn't add that we need to start collecting data on housing and on renters because we have no idea... Well, actually, someone here said that they did come up with a way to track where people had lived and where they live now, but we're really missing a lot of vital information that should be driving our housing policy, and so I'm thrilled that that will possibly happen. Aye.
Fritz?
Obviously, I support this also, and thank you very much for coming all the way from DC to support it and for your work nationwide. It's nice to hear that it's been done in other places so that we can learn from their experiences. I do share Mrs. Schwab's concern about paper copies of things being available as well. It should not be either or. There are still those of us who like to dog ear and write in the margins rather than putting little comments on wood. And I'm also concerned about sometimes things even now seem to be a needle in a haystack, that you have to Google things, you have to look, use the search item, and it's sometimes it's hard to find things. And I don't want future city councillors or bureaucrats saying, "Well, it was on the website. Why didn't you find it?" Because even now, when I know where I'm supposed to look, I sometimes can't find items, so that's a concern. We saw just today in the items we discussed so far how you can have the information that's clearly written on the time certain and on the consent agenda about this is what this is, and this is what we're doing, we're soliciting for bids, or we are building low-cost affordable housing. And still, people have questions, concerns, and they're going to need real people to be able to answer the phone, answer the email, and explain things because a lot of what we do is very complicated. Billions of dollars involved and 6,000 staff at the city of Portland, never mind the rest of the governments in the region. So let's keep that in mind, that it is not going to do away with people answering questions and also with actually meeting face-to-face. There are occasions where you can get a better outcome by sitting down and discussing things, and you can use the data that this process is going to make obvious in order to be able to have a discussion based on the data, based on the facts. And finally, one particular concern I have is about privacy, and, you know, it was mentioned about the appropriateness of when data is shared or not. We have had discussions, for instance, on the police body cams, that there's a great interest in having the police wear them for police accountability. There's also a great concern about those cameras being used for surveillance and for intruding on the public's privacy. And so we won't be done, I think, with real people talking things through and trying to choose the best way. This project is going to help us have more information on which to make those decisions. Aye.
Wheeler?
I'd like to respond and reflect on some of the public testimony that was given today. And frankly, I didn't think this would be controversial in the slightest, and yet it is, even though Portland is no longer anywhere near to being in the lead when it comes to open data. I mean, the irony, of course, is that Portland has been, since the very beginning of the open data movement, an absolute Mecca for open data. This will seem like a non sequitur, but it's actually not. I hear at every council meeting, somebody says how upset they are that they were not able to secure a meeting at a mutually agreed-upon time. And I want to assure you, I wish I could meet in person with every single person who wants to meet with me. And I can just tell you point-blank, as the mayor of a city, it's impossible for me to meet with everybody who would like to have a meeting, even people who I love, like Mary Ann Schwab. I think she's a wonderful jewel in this community, and she's the kind of person I would love to spend more time meeting with. And so, you know, bear with me as I try to maximize those opportunities for people to participate. I do respond to emails. This morning before 6:00 AM, I responded to probably 15 different emails. Last night after 10 o'clock, I responded to a bunch of them. That tends to be an easier and quicker way. I try to make myself available at the community, and of course, I listen here in public testimony. As many of you know, I've changed my perspective based on the public testimony I have heard at these microphones, so I'm doing my level best. Now, how is this related to the ordinance at hand? It's related in this way. I actually think, you know, somebody asked the question, somebody asked the question, "How do you trust the data?" And the answer is, the answer is, you can't trust the data. And think about this for a moment. This isn't pushing out data to the community and saying, "Here is the truth." This is pushing out data to the community because we're democratizing the data, and then everybody gets to look at that data and say, "True, false, something in between." Think about Twitter or Facebook. I'm sure there's nobody in this room who believes everything they read on Twitter or Facebook. There's another step that we are required to take, which is to dissect the data, question the data, use our reasoning capacity, do our research. But the first step is having the information out there. And by putting the information out there, if cities or bureaus or nonprofits or private sector companies, if they get busted for putting fake data out, that's an accountability mechanism in and of itself. So no, this isn't the end of the food chain, but it's an essential first step to democratize the data. So that's my only point. I'm enthusiastically supportive. I really appreciate the folks at Hack Oregon and your national counterparts who've been leading this movement around the country. It is a truly important next-generation step as technology evolves and we use it more and more to communicate and come to our own conclusions about the world around us. So I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted as amended. Thank you. The, you know, I'm going to move an item up, and I'm sorry we're a full, almost two hours behind today, and I apologize as the presiding officer. We're going to move 440 next, and that, of course, is what a number of you are waiting here for, and you've been waiting very patiently, and I appreciate it. So if you wouldn't mind, Carla, reading item number 440 for us.
Proclaim May 2017 to be Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Portland.
Before I read the proclamation, I want to thank Apano for all of the incredible and important work that they do in this community. I am very much looking forward to the opening of their cultural center in the Jade District, where they've partnered with the Rose City Community Development Corporation to also bring more affordable housing to the community. I know my staff is working diligently with both the Housing Bureau and the Portland Development Commission to fill the remaining gaps to make this project happen. And I want to be very clear: this project will happen. I want to reiterate my support for the project and all the good work that Apano does. It's my understanding that Reverend Joseph Santos Lyons and also Duncan Wong are here today to make a few comments, and I'd be delighted to hear that before we open it up for public testimony. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning.
Morning.
We have a PowerPoint. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, Duncan and Joseph could not be here, but my name is Zahir John Mohammed. I'm the policy director for Apano, and I'm joined here by Yin, a youth organizer, and Tak, one of the co-founders of Apano, who's one of our board members who knows many of you personally. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for allowing this opportunity to make this presentation, and thank you commissioners for giving us this chance. I also wanted a special shout-out to all the Asian-Americans who are here, some of whom work at Apano, some of whom are members, some who work at different city branches that came here. Today is a really special day for us, and I think, especially being here in this chamber for the last two hours and listening to all the testimonies, it was wonderful to see this open democracy, but what's so absent is the voices of color. It's quite shocking, I have to say. And being a person of color is very challenging in Portland, especially now. So I wanted to, just for a few minutes, show some PowerPoint slides, and then I'll yield the time to my colleagues. So I don't know if you have access to the PowerPoint as well.
We've got it right in front of us.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it.
So there's our contact information. I'm Zahir. This is Tak and Yin. So just a few things. So the Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders and Asian-Americans are the second and third fastest-growing ethnic communities in Oregon. So one of the things that we, you know, we always talk about Portland being such a white city, but things are changing very rapidly, and that's thanks in part to the growth of the Latino community and the Asian-American community. So partly, one of the things I think this sort of shows is that we're, and we see particularly in the areas where Apano is, out over an 82nd and Division, where it's, you know, there are parts where it's majority, you know, minority. And that's a change that we're seeing. Now, who are we and where are we? Most Asian-Americans are in Multanoma County, but there is actually a presence of Asian-Americans throughout the state, and we see on the right the growth numbers in Oregon. Bangladeshi and Fijian Taiwanese community are growing at the fastest rate. Now, granted, that might be because some of these communities were small, and so just, you know, adding an extra 1,000 people will sort of, you know, make this sort of data skewed, but if you just look at the trend here, Bangladeshi and Fijian communities are growing at the fastest rate. So economic contributions. We know that in Oregon and across the United States, Asian-Americans contribute massively to our economy. These are actually US Census Bureau numbers. We see a 40% increase in business ownership from 2002 to 2007. That's when the data that we had. A good number of these are small business owners. But I really want to focus in on this particular slide here, which is the challenges, and that's what we'll be speaking about today. We thank you, Mr. Mayor. We thank you commissioners for this proclamation. As NPR reported in February, and I'll quote this, "After years of declining numbers, hate crimes against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders are rising exponentially." We know this past Saturday, there were white supremists and Trump supporters marching...
On your bus, on your free bus.
Marching down, I respect you saying this, but if you can allow us, people of color, to speak about our own experiences. Thank you. So one of the things that was so alarming is that at Apano, we're a nonpartisan organization. Now, granted, most of us lean to the left, most of us lean Democratic. It's fine if Trump supporters want to express their support for our current president, but what we saw on Saturday was something entirely different. We saw people go outside of restaurants saying, "Go home. Go back to your country." Now, for those of us who have lived here a long time, this is nothing new. I can't recall another city in my life where I've been asked so many times, including at New Seasons, when I'm just buying bread and beer, like, "Where are you from? Wow, what kind of accent is that?" And when I say California, no one sort of really, you know, said, "Well, what they're really trying to say is, why aren't you white?" So we know this. We know this, right? And one of the things that, we had a recent public event now, at Apano, our priorities, at least legislatively, you know, I'm working on ethnic studies, reproductive health, these are really important issues, especially now that Trump is president. But overwhelming, the one issue that kept coming up in our public town hall, we had about 100 people, was hate crimes. Now, many of our members are Jewish, and we hear incidences of swastikas put on schools. We hear incidences of women who wear the headscarf, the Muslim headscarf, their scarves being pulled. We hear kids, and I apologize for my language, being called... We hear kids, and I apologize for my language, being called Japs. Now, this is nothing new. We can't say this just randomly started right after, you know, President Trump won, but we do see a rise in it. Now, some of these incidences aren't being reported. So, what can we do? I just want to end with one story before I yield to my colleagues. Mr. Mayor, you spoke about our public space. I just want to reiterate why it's important. So, I was in Salem for a lobby day. I'm in Salem pretty often. This young Muslim woman pulls me aside and says, "Hey, are you Muslim?" I'm like, "Yeah, okay. So, can I talk to you off to the side?" "Sure, of course, no problem." She talks me to the side and says, "A member of her family was recently harassed." So, I said, "Hey, look, I know you might not trust city officials. She lives in Portland, but I do believe Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Wheeler and others are receptive. They want to hear these things." But for a variety of reasons, she didn't really feel comfortable, so she told me. And that happens a lot, a lot of us community activists. So, then she said, "Well, what can I do?" And I said, "Well, you know, there are different resources. There's the Muslim Education Trust, I know them personally, and they're good folks." And she said, "You know, I don't really feel comfortable going to the mosque." And that's fine. Not everyone feels comfortable going to the mosque. I'm not particularly devout myself, I don't go." She said, "What other spaces are there for her as a young woman?" She goes to her high school, but they kind of make fun of her. Her teachers dismiss her and say, "You just need to focus. Just focus on doing well on the SAT." But she wants to go somewhere, right? And so, part of the thing that is so lacking here in Portland is this sort of third space. We have the school, we have these religious spaces, and they're important, and many of them are wonderful, but this third space, and here's this young Muslim woman who's not religious, her parents are not religious, where she sort of finds herself at limbo. And so, I said, "Just come to Apano. Like, we're not going to have, you don't have to talk about these issues." I mean, one of the things that we do is we have dance parties, and we watch movies, and we talk, and we have food, and that's also important. So, we talk about supporting communities. That is also really important. So, I just want to reiterate how important space is right now. It is so critical. And so, if we could have your support for this space, it would mean the world. Now, I'm going to yield my time to my colleague Yin, who's our youth organizer, who's done some amazing work, and here's on a daily basis what some of the youth are going through. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks again, Mayor Wheeler, for the opportunity to speak again. My name is Yin Se Chao. I'm the youth organizer at Apano, and so, I build and support youth generally in the Portland area and have plans to also expand to support youth, particularly Asian youth, throughout Oregon. I also want to tell you all why I am doing the work that I'm doing. I get to unfortunately see my father work 40 to 50 hours a week at $11 an hour, and all of that goes to bills. And there's no fun, there's, it's all for survivorship. I also work and build with youth who are seeing and feeling the impacts of national and local legislation. I don't want my youth growing up knowing that they are, as if they're not valued, because they are amazingly valued and capable of living and thriving in a world that seems to tell us that we don't belong and that we are not meant to succeed. I have youth who is mixed-race and beautiful. However, the environments that he is in often is telling him that he's not enough of any of his ethnicities, that he is meant to be seen as a criminal and bad, and often offers no safe havens of acceptance. Imagine constantly being told that you aren't enough, so eventually, you believe it. And I believe that Apano has been a safe haven for him and also a sanctuary. To be very frank, there are some times where I feel like I would like to leave Portland. Just because there's no safe space, or space in general, that is very welcoming to me and my communities, my experience, I was in the Bay Area and had, the Bay Area has shown me how much they truly valued their youth and their community. There are tons of youth organizations and spaces just meant for youth and community to thrive, to have fun and to feel safe, but also empowered and valued. There are times I want to leave, but unfortunately, I don't have the economic privilege to do so, nor do I want to. My people are here, this is my home. We need this space that is so well-deserved and so long overdue. So, as I leave you today, I want you to think about these questions constantly and do something. How many of our Asian Pacific Islander youth and youth of color have to face the hate crimes, institutionalized racism, and sometimes worse, death, until the city of Portland finally starts to value us? How many of our Asian and Pacific Islander community elders and families, and elders and families of color, have to live scared for their lives in a city that seems to not really care to protect them? And when I say "protect," I don't mean, I do not mean police, and oftentimes, sanctuary is only just a word. We fear for our families' lives, we fear for our families being torn apart, being targeted, and just because you don't hear about it doesn't mean it doesn't happen. You have the power to do something. If you say you got our back, then show it. Too often, the concerns of the Asian and Pacific Islander community, as well as the concerns of the communities of color, are forgotten and glazed over. Do something with your power. Invest in our community centers and the people who are out there on the streets talking about the very issues that you all are advocating for. All of this, you probably have already heard before, and if you've heard it more than once, and then you still continue to hear it, and people are still talking about it, that means not enough is being done. Here's your chance to do something that is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. Actually, good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and...
Is the green light on?
Yeah.
It's very good, sorry.
And Member of City Council, thank you for inviting us here to acknowledge and celebrate the APA Heritage Month. My name is Ted Nguyen, a co-founder of Apano, which was founded 20 years ago and still is the only statewide social justice organization in the state of Oregon. So, I want to talk a little bit about Apano, and I have a specific ask. So, Apano, this is a critical time and also historic time for Apano. Currently, we have our member running for public offices. This is the first time that we have the ability to endorse and provide financial support for candidates running for public office who share the same values as ours. So, while we celebrate success, we also realize that we still have a long way to go. Yahoo mentioned last Saturday, what's so scary, we have hundreds of people marching and telling the residents of this city who don't look like them to go back where we came from. This is right in front of Apano offices and a lot of Asian businesses. So, this reminds us that Asian Pacific Islander community, we need to work with other communities of colors. We need to work with allies, because there are no good or bad immigrants. We all come from somewhere. So, now, more than ever, we need a safe space to organize, to engage, and to work with each other. And thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for your commitment earlier that the city will fill the gap for our new culture center. Our community rely on each other more now than ever, and we are interdependent on each other. This project is a community all because it will build by the community and for the community, and it will get there. So, I hope the city will be one of the partner. So, a few years from now, actually, near future, a year and a half, we want to have all of you to be at our grand opening, and we want to be able to say, "Yes, we were a part of this. We make this story a reality." So, I look forward to working with you, and thank you for the opportunity to hear me and hear my message.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Commissioner Fritz?
Mr. Nguyen, we're not allowed to say so, but if you'd like to say the names of the candidates that you're supporting or elsewhere, where people could find that information.
Yeah, sure. So, Apano, we have a C4, and we're endorsing candidates for the school board race this year. And so, that's a new, and then we also have one of our staff members. I'll just give a shout-out to her. Her name is Kathy Way. She's wonderful, and she's running for North Clackamas School Board. So, we see this maturation of Apano, where now we're starting to engage in electoral politics as well.
Yeah. It feels so good instead of, yeah, asking for money, we actually, the board, discussing who we give money to, to support their candidates.
As a immigrant myself, I know that things sometimes go differently in different cultures. You could also say the names of any of the other candidates you'd like people to be aware of.
Yeah, sure. The candidates we're endorsing for the PPS, I mean, if it's, if you find it, sure, we're endorsing for David Douglas, Anadil Rosio, Andrea Valderrama, and Stephanie Stevens. For PPS, we're endorsing Jamila Singleton Munson, Julia Brim Edwards, and Virginia LaForte. And we're also urging our members to vote for the PPS bond. So, we'll have a public event on Monday, May 8th, at our JAM's multicultural space at 6:00 PM. You can check out details on our Facebook page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Before we get to public testimony, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the city of Portland is proud of its diversity and draws strength from the rich cultures and traditions of all community members, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an opportunity for all individuals and organizations to recognize the contributions of Pacific Islanders, Native Hawaiians, and Asian Americans to development and defenses, to the development and defense of our country, as well as the cultural, civic, and economic life of Portland for over 150 years. And whereas Pacific Islanders, Native Hawaiians, and Asian Americans come from a complex and diverse mix of many languages, ethnicities, and faiths, including Buddhism, Christianity, Confucianism, Hinduism, Islam, Judaism, and Sikhism. And whereas Pacific Islanders, Native Hawaiians, and Asian Americans in Oregon's are prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, incarceration, and displacement, now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim May 2017 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
[applause]
And don't leave without getting this. Please.
Mayor, this is a proclamation, so we don't, we don't take testimony, but could I just make one comment?
Oh, that is a good point. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Thank you to our friends from the community, and particularly, Apano, for their testimony. The one thing, though, I do want to just urge our colleagues to consider, as long as I've been on the council, we have scheduled proclamations honoring people and organizations at the beginning of our council meetings. And that is in part because, because we have chosen to honor them, and we have other work to do. We don't want to inconvenience community members who we've invited. And I would urge that in the future, we work with the clerk's office and with colleagues to make sure that these things are at the beginning of our agenda and not on the regular agenda. It's just more respectful of people's time, and I think it is a great tradition that we often begin our meetings by honoring and celebrating a group or an organization or a person. So, colleagues, we have it in our power to do that, because the reason proclamations sometimes go on the regular agenda is because the time certainties are filled, and so, I would just urge that we work with Polo and the mayor's office to remedy that in the future.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all for being here. It's very appreciated, and thank you for the testimony. 436 was pulled. I don't know if we still have Anna Kenwood. We may have lost her for today, and that's okay. If she comes back later, that's fine. So, now we move to...
I'm here.
Oh, Anna.
Yay.
Hello. Come on down. So, item 436 got pulled from the agenda, and if you wouldn't mind, Carla, just reading it again for the record.
Provide straight-time pay for certain overtime hours worked by the electrical supervisor.
If you could just give us a few comments about this, and then we'll take public testimony. It was pulled by a citizen. We'll find out what their question was, and then maybe a response.
All right, great. Mayor, Commissioners, Anna Kenwood, Director of the Bureau of Human Resources. So, the ordinance before you today actually partially reinstates overtime for the electrical supervisor classification. This is a classification where we changed the salary, I think, maybe two years ago, from a grade six to a grade eight. And when we did that, we removed the ability for this position to earn overtime because it's supervisory, and substituted management leave, which is a benefit, discretionary benefit, that supervisors and managers can obtain under the city's rules. In discussing this with folks at the Portland Bureau of Transportation, they have a serious recruitment problem. The incumbent asked for a voluntary demotion out of the position. They have had candidates on the list turn them down because of the amount of overtime that this position entails. It's approximately 100 hours a year of call-outs. So, that number doesn't really include things like maybe working through lunch, those kinds of things you would expect in a supervisory role, but it does include the call-outs for all kinds of emergencies. So, I agreed to amend the, take an ordinance to amend the HR administrative rule to reinstitute overtime, but in recognition of the fact this is a supervisory position, the overtime is hour-for-hour. So, it's not overtime at time and a half, it's simply overtime at straight time, but also because the position will now be receiving overtime, they're no longer eligible for management leave. So, that was a compromise that the Bureau of Transportation supported, and they believe will help alleviate their recruitment problems for this position. But it is pretty serious that not to have an electrical supervisor, to be responding to the various things that happen with poles falling down, getting knocked into, things like that, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions before we move to public testimony? If you could just hang out a bit?
Absolutely.
Public testimony, please, Carla. I don't know...
Joe Walsh pulled this. I think he's left. I don't know if anybody else wants to testify?
Very good. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Super Watchdog X. One of the problems I have with this resolution ordinance is that when somebody works overtime, and I'm one of the people that actually went against Multnomah County at the Suicide Division on all the deputies running up all this overtime, to where their salary plus overtime was putting them at 200-plus thousand a year. And I went in front of Multnomah County to chair a forum, and I said, "I don't approve of that." And they brought in Multnomah County Health Professionals to overlook the people in suicide watch and cut the cost down tremendously. Now, the deputies aren't happy about that. Whether I take any credit or not, that's okay. On this issue here, though, is that I'm going to take the other side, is that when they work overtime, they should be paid time and a half. Now, you're saying this is a supervisor position, and we don't have to technically do that, but it sounds to me like then you're going to kick up their salary to kind of have that already built in. So, to me, you're kind of making a maneuver here, and why this, I think, was pulled is because this was on the consent agenda, if I'm correct, and we moved it to the regular agenda, because it appeared as though you were kind of making a maneuver here to just pick up the salary at a higher salary, anticipate they'll have some overtime built into it, not really knowing how much, but this will attract people to come in and do the job. So, I have some reservations on how this is being handled, and because it was on the consent agenda. And to me, when you work overtime, and again, deputies may not like me at Multnomah County, and that's okay, I don't care, but the reality is, is that I think you should be paid that overtime. It's just who might be able to cut those costs down for the public to save money, and that's my position. So, something seems a little out of place to me on this whole situation. Thank you.
Lightning, can I just respond?
Yes.
Because you're making very thoughtful points. I just want to give you just the Bureau, I'm not P-Bot. But here's their, here's what they would say. Currently, the supervisor in this position currently works lots of hours beyond the normal work week.
Yes.
And we don't pay them overtime. They're not eligible for overtime because they're exempt as a supervisor. What HR is telling us is that that's not a very attractive position for someone because they're working a lot of hours. And so, if we change our rules for this one position and provide compensation for some of those overtime hours, we have a better chance of recruiting for it. And so, the proposal before us is, even though supervisors are not eligible generally for overtime, we would pay straight time for those extra hours, recognizing that it's a burden on this employee's family and on him or her. So, that's what this does, and I understand that your view might be that we provide overtime to supervisors. Supervisors, though, are generally exempt from overtime. They get paid a bigger base rate because of that, but the number of hours here makes it hard for us to recruit, so we're actually adding straight time as over, you know, for those additional hours.
But if I may respond real fast, is that technically, this individual coming into this position understands they're going to have that additional hour, hours put in, possibly, but what you're doing, instead of saying, "Hey, we can't pay you overtime, we want you to still work at this job, we're just going to kick your salary up higher," as though nobody will look at and say, "Oh, but that's also including some additional overtime, but we can't pay you because you're exempt, but we're going to kick your salary up to make sure you want to work for us."
Just, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just giving you what I understand is the case. I respect your view. We haven't been able to... We haven't been able to hire this position under the current compensation. So the market says there's, we can't find people willing to do it, so HR is saying, "Give us some flexibility so we can pay additional." So we are paying more in order to get someone to do this job.
And I hate the term overtime, being paid straight time.
I agree.
That's, that's what's catching me off guard here, but...
Okay, fair enough.
That's my position, thank you.
That makes good sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Nancy, now I have two minutes.
Sure.
My concern is Warren Buffett owns Pacific Corps, and he runs the electricity for our trains. And I think it was about three weeks ago, the trains completely shut down, people were headed to work, I was headed to a meeting, and were asked to walk backwards to be able to get on a functional train. And it was pouring rain, it was, happened just like that. And I'm wondering if there's a relationship here that the city has, because if Warren Buffett, he is known not to maintain lines. This is proven. They will not pull his license at the PUC. I think the city should get active on a PUC case, you can make a much better situation for the supervisor you have, and cover the things that need to be covered. I'm not sure what the tri-met relation is to the city on following through with what they're supposed to be doing and making sure things run. All the workers that are not getting to work on time, the loss is huge. So I would suggest that you examine that license, and I would suggest you object to Warren Buffett, because he's now, has that manufacturing plant, and Chloe knows about the toxins that are coming from that plant, and whether or not he's even installed the filter that he was required to install, I don't think so. And here we are licensing him, and I think that's a city license, and why? Where's the social responsibility in that? And I really would like you to pay attention to it, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Charles, Bridge Crane Johnson. And, you know, I take to heart Nick Fish's representation that, you know, it's kind of essential that we find some kind of pot sweetening so that someone will take this job. But I think that when we look at, you know, right there at the beginning, it says, "This person is going to supervise sixteen, supervise the 16 additional people." Something needs to happen at P-Bot so that there's multiple chains of accountability, so the person is not feeling that taxed. We just don't need to have this convoluted ordinance stuff. We understand that these are late-night on-call, but I hope that in addition to finding some pot sweetening, they'll be, for the sake of quality of work environment, I can't remember who's got transportation right now, but I hope the people at Transportation, both the regular union people, will find a way to formulate a response plan so that, that increases employee satisfaction and safety for us, so that we just don't have one guy who gets hired in to a position and won't stay because there's management issues within that part of P-Bot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Colleagues, before we move on this, could I just have you stew on something for a few minutes? We've got quite a few more items left on the agenda. Commissioner Fish has pulled item 449 at 2:00. Could I suggest we continue till 1:00, if people can stay, and then let's start at 2:30, if that works with people?
We could stop after this and then come back at 2:00.
Let's start at 2:00, Mayor.
You want to start at 2:00?
Well, because we have a lot of procurement reports.
Very good, let's, very good. I'm sorry to interrupt the process, is that the, is that the last testimony on that?
Yes.
That item? Please call the rule. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, that's a...
Emergency.
It is emergency, good, please call the rule.
Fish?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the ordinance is adopted.
Mayor, I do notice that there's a few people who are still here, and some who have not yet testified. I'm not sure which item you're here for, if you haven't testified yet, or if you're just here to watch.
I'm going to testify on the radio.
I said who hasn't testified on anything yet?
Well, we have some people here from, on the procurements, Commissioner. They were the next in the queue.
So should we do those before we break for lunch, so that the community members...
We have staff here, if we could do the procurements, 442, 443, 444...
Yeah, let's read 442, 443, and 444 together, please, because it's the same people testifying, and then we'll vote on them separately, if that's all right.
442, accept bid of Moore Excavation Inc. for the Mount Scott Arlita Sewer Rehabilitation Project for $2,097,621. And 443, accept bid of Stellar J Corporation for the Airport Way 1 Pump Station Improvements and AW03 Force Main Repair Project for $1,636,000. And 444, accept bid of Twin Oaks Construction and Metal Works for the Forest Park Trail Bridges Replacement Project for $661,200.
Very good, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good afternoon, actually, sorry.
Commissioners, I'll, I'll just take each item.
Please.
Okay. You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Moore Excavation. The engineer's estimate on this project was $1,910,000 with a high confidence level. On March 7, 2017, six bids were received, and Moore Excavation is the low bidder at Specific materials were, and additional quantities were added to this bid after the engineer's estimate was complete, therefore the bids came in higher. The Bureau of Environmental Services has reviewed the bid items and accepts the proposed pricing as good. The city put forward an aspirational goal for DMW-ESB subcontractor and supplier utilization at 20% of the hard construction costs for this project. Moore Excavation identified four divisions of work for DMW-ESB opportunities with participation at 9.1%, or $190,300, with work being performed in trucking, concrete cutting, traffic control, and landscaping. I'll turn this back over to council if there's any questions.
Any questions on 442? Very good.
443?
Any question, oh, go ahead, sorry.
443...
That's Stellar J.
Okay.
I will have a question on this, so if you could do the presentation, I'll come back here.
Okay. You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Stellar J Corporation. The engineer's estimate on this project was $2,374,000 with a high confidence level. On February 9, 2017, seven bids were received, and Stellar J Corp. is the low bidder at $1,636,000, which is 31% under the engineer's estimate. The Bureau of Environmental Services has reviewed the bid items and accepts the proposed pricing as good. The city put forward an aspirational goal for DMWSB subcontractor and supplier utilization at 20% of the hard construction costs for this project. Stellar J identified three divisions of work for DMWSB opportunities with participation at 3.8%, or $62,620, with work being performed in dump trucking, saw cutting, and coatings and waterproofing. I'll turn this back over to council.
Yes, Mayor, colleagues, Christine, the last time we had a bid here from Stellar J, I, I raised some concerns about the numbers.
Kristin. Kristin, can you, can you get those documents, please?
No, sir, we're not, before, we're not, you're not invited up yet, just hold on one sec. And so we ended up, there was a meeting that was held with, with the company, that, that does good work, and, and out of that conversation, I learned a couple of things that, that I wanted to just get your feedback on. The first is that whereas in Oregon, we have these, we use an aspirational goal, they do contracting in Washington that has a hard goal. So we say, there's an aspirational goal of 20%, and then we, we look to see whether... So this is very disruptive, Mayor, can we just, can we hold one second?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
Yes, we're getting ahead of ourselves.
Sorry.
So we, Carla, go ahead.
People are asking if we're taking that now, or...
We're taking that at 2:00.
We'll take 441 at 2:00.
At 2:00?
2:00.
Well, Amanda Fritz, allow me to speak then, before interrupting the central...
Continue, Commissioner.
So please, please. So let me, let me just go back, let me just start again, because this is an important conversation. And I'm not singling out Stellar J as a, as a bidder, I'm, I'm responding to some concerns that the council has raised previously around these kinds of contracts. So at the last time we had a similar hearing, I raised some concerns about why the numbers were so low. We've had some follow-up conversations with the contractor, and I've learned a couple of things, Mayor. Number one is that they've had more success in the state of Washington, and in part, it's because unlike our rules, which set aspirational goals and then require good faith efforts, meaning you've got a document that you, you reached out to a universe and you, you gave people a chance. In Washington, there are hard numbers, and, and we're in the same circuit, by the way, we're all in the Ninth Circuit. So to the extent people are balancing what the law allows you to do to, to address disparities, in Washington, they go with hard numbers. Number two is, another piece of feedback we got from the company was that if it's just low bid, we're not likely to get the same results that we would if we went with alternative procurement, alternative contracting. And so I, I raise this, in this setting, because I think it's a conversation that we can have more globally, because we are all committed to providing more opportunity for people, particularly off the big infrastructure projects. And Christine, I want, I wanted to give you a moment, just to give us some feedback on those two points. The difference between Oregon and Washington law, and, and also whether the current way we go about contracting with low bid is the most effective way to get to our goals, or whether we should be more aggressive using alternative contracting.
So, thank you, Commissioner. I'll address the first one. I am not familiar with the whole state of Washington having hard goals. I do understand that the DOT projects have hard goals, just like in Oregon, so those are federally funded, federal highway, and those are hard goals. My understanding is based upon our last disparity study in which you led, the outcome out of that was that the city has programs with aspirational goals. I think we would, if we wanted to switch to hard goals, we would probably need to check back in to see if we need to do a new disparity study with updated data, and whether we, as a local entity, can do hard goals as opposed to the aspirational goals. So that's a conversation with the city attorney's office.
I think the mayor has indicated some desire at some point to do an update to the disparity study. Is it your understanding that federal law is different than state law in this regard, and that federal law, in effect, allows for hard goals, and therefore gives the legal teams less anxiety than, than when we look at applying state law? Because I know that the test is always, can we defend our position?
I think the law is probably similar, I think it just depends on our disparity study and what the, what the data is showing.
Data shows.
And so if we're, we're to do an updated disparity study, and then we were choosing to take that data and, and put that into hard goals, you know, that could be a direction that the city could head.
So I have some recollection of that disparity study, which, at the end of the day, kind of pleased no one, but it was what an independent consultant delivered. And so I think, colleagues, there's two questions there, two, three questions. One, should we update our disparity study? Two, how much flexibility do we have to move from aspirational goals to harder goals? And number three, what's the legal risk of doing that? And the legal risk is a function of who's on the Supreme Court, what disparities have been documented locally, and how far we're willing to go in order to promote opportunity, knowing there's a legal risk. And the legal risk, just simply stated for my new colleagues, is you can get sued for having hard goals that, that someone disagrees with under the current standard the Supreme Court has set forth. So that's one piece. And the second piece, Christine, is what about moving to alternative kinds of contracting as a way of boosting our numbers?
Well, Commissioner, I think, I personally believe that alternative contracting here at the city can help us achieve all of our goals. It can help us achieve our minority women goals, can help us achieve our sustainability objectives. I think it, there's a fine line on which, which types of projects should have an alternative procurement method or an alternative delivery method, and which types of projects should not. There are, I think, believe, 14 findings that have to be substantiated by state law. We have to bring those to city council, and you need to approve that. So the alternative delivery process can take longer, and so I think that it puts the operating bureaus and my office in kind of a pinch on, you know, are we going to take longer to do that type of process in which we can do a best value approach, or are we going to do low bids because we're trying to get projects done? And so that's a continuing conversation about where's that line to use different delivery methods.
And, and fair enough. And in some of these infrastructure projects involving the utilities, there is a time sensitivity to make sure that, that pump doesn't fail, or, and that may be different than building out a park where there's more flexibility. But it does seem to me, I'll, I'll use the Parks, Parks Bureau as an example, they have effectively harnessed alternative contracting to get better numbers and more community participation. And since we are planning, and with the mayor's proposed budget, even planning to do more infrastructure through the utilities, Mayor and colleagues, I, I think it's time to have this hard conversation, or else we're going to constantly come back to having numbers that we think are below what our goals are. Commissioner?
I appreciate you highlighting this, and I would suggest maybe a work session to delve into it. It's kind of ironic, the next presentation we're going to have is 444, which is a Parks Bureau project, and the numbers are really not all that great, there is a need, a reason for that, but I think it's, it's obviously a very complex issue, which I know Chief Procurement Officer Moody has been struggling with as long as I've been on the council. And it, it's, I think it's possibly one of the areas where we need most coordination between all the council offices to make a dent in the, in the contracting numbers.
Well, can I make a suggestion off of that? Because, Mayor, in your budget, you've proposed some realignment at the, at the city level in how we do, how we do oversight of our minority contracting generally. We have this ongoing question about how to, how to best maximize the opportunity in these contracts. And as Commissioner Fritz reminds us, each bureau has its own set of unique challenges, and there's some challenges in the marketplace as well. I, I'm going to recommend that we adopt, that we adopt the reports before us, because everyone is played by the rules, and that's why I didn't want to get too hung up on singling out one particular business. It's not, I've used Stellar J Corporation as a test case to better understand where we're at. I'm not singling them out, and this work is work that has to be done, and everyone is played by the rules. But I would welcome a chance to do a work session and a digger, a bigger dive, because we're, we're not getting the numbers the council wants, and it's through no fault of our outstanding procurement division, we may want to think about changing the way we do some of this contracting, so that's my...
Commissioner, can I speak really quickly? I have been actually leading an effort to establish some criteria for construction projects in particular on using alternative delivery methods. So I have been working with Chief Engineer Teresa Elliott and some other people within BES in transportation to kind of come up with a criteria in which the bureau project managers, along with our office, can look at different projects and the delivery method, and see if we can come up with a different outcome.
Well, you're going to have my full support on that, assuming I continue to have the honor of leading the utilities. I think you have the council's full support, and we'll look, we'll drill down on the utilities, but I think there's some broader lessons and some, a broader conversation, and I hope maybe this summer we could, we could address that, Mayor, through a work session.
Sounds great, love to do that. Good.
Shall we go to 444?
Please.
444.
I have staff coming up for this still, so...
Welcome.
Hello.
Welcome and thank you for your patience.
It looks like your estimate of getting done at 1:00 was...
Um, you can, I can do it in a minute, you can check it.
Okay.
Do you want to...
Hello, Mayor Wheeler.
Hello.
Members of council, my name's Lauren McGuire, and I'm the Development Program Manager of Portland Parks, and, and with me is Jill Hutchinson, who's the project manager for this particular project. We're here today to accept the bid from Twin Oaks Construction for the Forest Park Trail Bridges in the amount of $661,200. And we want to tell you a little bit about the project itself. This project is part of the 2014 bond program that was passed by our voters for, as part of the $68 million bond. And that bond is addressing critical needs that we have in our parks, in, in particular with seven repair priority areas, including our failing playgrounds and pools and trails and bridges, as you know, facilities to protect workers, Pioneer Courthouse Square, accessibility issues, restrooms, and other urgent safety needs. This particular project falls into the trails and bridges category, and it aims to preserve access to our natural areas and open spaces by repairing our... of the Twalton Mountains. The park includes 5,100 wooded acres, and Portland Parks maintains more than 70 miles of trails and many bridges within the park. The project will replace four wooden bridges within the park. One bridge is on the Wildwood Trail between Cornell Road and the Lower McClay Trail. In a 2015 structural analysis, the bridge was found to be failing and structurally deficient. Likewise, in that same study, the two bridges on the Lower McClay Trail between Lower McClay Trailhead and the Wildwood Trail were found to be in need of replacement as well. We also have a bridge on the Maple Trail between Koenig Trail and Fire Lane 4, which actually failed in 2012, and the Maple Trail has been closed to the public ever since. All these projects are totally bonded by the 2014 bond. The new bridges were designed with durability, longevity, ease of maintainability, and the natural aesthetic of Forest Park in mind. The bridge structures will be constructed of weathering steel and fiberglass reinforced plastic decking and Alaska yellow cedar handrails. The timeline for the project is as follows. We've already gone through the design and construction drawing phase, obviously. ESA V-Hilg Grumms helped us with that in fieldwork design and grummla engineering. We've talked with the Forest Park and Linton Neighborhood Associations, the Forest Park Conservancy, and other stakeholder groups in the public outreach process. We also had drawings approved through the site development permit process, and the project has been through environmental land use review, and now we're here to request approval of the bid. The project construction is anticipated to begin this summer and hopefully completed this year as well. Some other projects that we have in the works and the...
Actually, I'm just going to ask you to skip those. We'll do those later, just due to the hour. Thank you.
Sure. So these are the projects that we have upcoming in construction, and so Christine will now talk to you about the bid itself.
Okay. So what you have for you is a procurement report recommending a contract award to Twin Oaks Construction Metal Works. The engineer's estimate on this project was $640,000 with a confidence level of moderate. On March 16, 2017, one bid was received. Twin Oaks is the low bidder at $661,221. Portland Parks and Recreation has determined that the proposed pricing is good due to the nature of the project. Very few contractors have experience working in remote areas with access constraints, as is required on this project. Twin Oaks identified one division of work for DMW ESB subcontracting opportunities with participation at 1.27 percent or $8,000, with work being performed in tree cutting.
Great. Any further questions before we go to public testimony? Any public testimony?
No one signed up on any of these.
Mayor, I move the procurement report on 442.
Second.
Moved second, call the rule.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Mayor, I move the procurement report on 443.
I didn't get to say that 442 has been adopted. 442, the procurement report is accepted. Commissioner Fish moves, Fritz seconds, 443, call the rule.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The report is accepted.
Mayor, I move the procurement report on 444, and I also compliment the team that just presented on that.
Thank you very much, everybody. Second.
Moved and seconded and complimented, call the rule.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The procurement report is accepted. Commissioner Fish has a request, and I'd like you to consider this. He has staff here for items 446, 447, and 448. We could go through them now or wait for this afternoon?
What I could offer you now, if you're interested, is we'll do all three in five minutes, take public testimony, and then have...
I'm setting my timer right now.
Thank you.
Go. Call the items, 446, 447, and 448 together, please.
446, authorize a competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder for the construction of the Northwest Industrial Street and 28th Avenue Sewer Rehabilitation Project Number E10782 for an estimated $2 million. 447, authorize a competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the Slabtown Sewer Replacement Project Number E10663 for an estimated $8.86 million. And 448, accept the report on the status of the Columbia Boulevard wastewater treatment plant, lagoon, restructuring phase three and four, Project Number E07146, from the chief engineer.
Mayor, item number 446 is a project in the industrial northwest in which we seek authorization to construct 608 feet of 30-inch sewer pipe, four manholes, and additional infrastructure improvements. The project will protect public health and our environment by increasing sewer capacity and reducing the risk of street flooding and sewer backup. Construction is scheduled to begin in August and to be completed in January of 2018. Scott Gibson and Terrence Chan are here to do a two-minute presentation and answer any of your questions. Scott, go ahead.
We'll do our best to work through this, Terrence. It's going to require that you move pretty quick. So, what I would like to say before we get started is Terrence Chan runs a program of urgent sewer rehabilitation. When we discover a bad sewer during routine inspection, Terrence's program repairs those. It's about $3 million a year, and he's going to quickly walk us through the latest effort that he's got for us.
So, first of all, I would like to give a brief introduction of the project background. So this project is on Industrial Street between Northwest 26th and 28th Avenue, and so there's a map showing the location. And the existing 15- and 18-inch combined sewers in this project were built in 1924, and CCTV inspection showed longitudinal cracks and deformation along the length. And so there are major sags about 100 feet long, and so full replacement of the sewer pipe is necessary before complete failure occurs. And so the pipe is under capacity and needs to be upsized to 30 inches to prevent surcharge. And so here are some pictures showing the defects in the pipe, so you can see the longitudinal cracks on the upper left-hand corner and the one in the middle, the picture in the middle. And the one at the top, right-hand corner, yeah, shows the water sitting in the pipe due to the sack, and the two pictures at the bottom show the root infiltration at the joints. So there are some challenges in this project. First of all, this ground condition is poor, is loose fine to medium sand, undocumented fill material, including construction debris and wood and ceramic, as you can see in the picture. Also, there's contaminant media in the upstream segment of the project, where excavation spoils have to be taken to an approved landfill. And also, the groundwater level is above four feet above the bottom of the pipe, which requires de-watering during construction.
We also found some Christmas ornaments from Commissioner Udaley's house that we will be, once they've been cleaned, they will be returned to her.
Thank you.
So, due to the above reasons, the polytium microtunneling construction method is chosen for the construction of the project, and so about 470 feet will be constructed by microtunneling, and the rest, about 135 feet, will be constructed by open trench method. And by replacing the old and deteriorating sewers, this project will increase the sewer capacity, reduce risk of street flooding and sewer backup, and protect the public health and environment. So extensive community reach has been conducted to neighboring properties and property owners and business owners, including the Northwest Industrial Business Association. So outreach methods include emails, phone calls, door-to-door site visits, and so the business in the project area include industrial warehouses and manufacturers, and there's no single-family or multifamily neighbors. The engineer's estimate for this project is $2 million, and the level of confidence is high. We have accounted for the known issues, and the estimate is based on the price for some similar projects we have done in the past. The project is expected to start construction in August this year and complete in January 2018.
Sir, that was outstanding. Thank you. Mayor, if you allow us to also do 447, we'll put 448 over to the afternoon, and that way we can just have the two presentations with this team here.
Sounds good.
Scott, why don't you pick up 447?
Got it. So, good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Good afternoon. I'll turn this over to your project manager, who can walk you through the presentation. Ruben Gonzalez-Baird.
Thank you. I'm Ruben Gonzalez-Baird. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, thank you for this time. I want to present the Slabtown Sewer Replacement Project. We are located in northwest Portland, generally bounded by Northwest 21st and 12th Avenues to the west and east, and Northwest Thurman and Pettigrove Streets to the north and south, respectively. The inception of this project began with the 2012 Environmental Services System Plan. We'll be relieving sewer backup and structural risk by replacing century-old pipe. Our system plan, you can see that the project location, we're in an area that was identified with high risk for sewer backups and street flooding. Our project goals and objectives include replacement of about 8,400 linear feet of mainline pipe, that's about 1.6 miles, ranging in sizes between eight and 42 inches in diameter. And much, as I mentioned, much of this pipe was constructed over 100 years ago. Most of the work will be taking place on local streets, some of it will be on busier streets, and we're also coordinating efforts with PBOT's 20th Avenue LID project so that their project will build a portion of this sewer improvement project. We've been heavily involved with public involvement outreach throughout the course of this project. We've collaborated with the community to identify impacts and access needs. That includes outreach to about 1,200 households and businesses. There's a lot of mixed use in this area, including multifamily residential and commercial businesses. We've sent out frequent flyers, newsletters, emails, and we've updated our project website along the way. Outcomes of the public involvement process include we will be maintaining local traffic access to all the properties, we'll be providing constant updates throughout the project, as well as more periodic, monthly, and quarterly updates, and we'll comply with private property access agreements. The most of the work is actually going to be open-cut trench construction installation. We will be using several different pipe materials, including C905, PVC, and reinforced concrete. We'll be doing about 1,000 feet of static pole pipe bursting, which is HDPE pipe. The project budget and schedule includes our engineer's estimate of about $8.9 million. Our level of confidence is high. We've identified the conflicts, and we've come up with measures to address those through our engineering design. We're planning on advertising this contract in mid-June of this year and beginning construction in October with a duration of about 400 days. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Is there any public testimony on 446, 447, or 448? Seeing none, please call the rule. Sorry, excuse me.
446 and 447.
These are 446 and 447.
Go to a second reading.
Go to a, they are, it's a non-emergency first reading. They move to second reading.
And Mayor, we will be prepared to bring 448 at the top of the agenda at 2:00.
2:00 PM, and just for the record, to make sure I got this right, so 449 is referred back to your office. It'll be up on May 11th at 2:30. 448 will be at 2:00 PM along with 445, 442, and 441.
Not 442.
Correct, I'm sorry. 441 and 439.
Correct.
So, to do that in numerical order, 439, 441, 445, and 448 are moved to the 2:00 PM agenda. We are adjourned, Scott.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fish.